There was nothing last week.
Yeah, it was a turn-
We didn't have a meeting last- two weeks ago, you mean?
Two weeks, yeah, that's what I meant. The revenue turnover policy. This one for current business, I don't know what that is, because I didn't-
Well, that's the most property. So that I know just-
All right.
Yeah, it was the one that we had on the agenda two weeks ago.
This is not going to be on there.
All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting, the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, April the 23rd, 2024. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook, live on the public access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. All items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're to begin this evening with public comments. Do we have any public comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just want to say that it is this Friday, that the 10th anniversary, Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader fundraiser. I am very honored and privileged to be hosting for the 10th year. And I did notice, as I thought about this, that the first one, we missed two because of COVID. So the first year we did this, the kids who were sixth graders either were like one-year-old or weren't even born. So that's scary to me to think about in those terms, but we wish everybody to come out to the high school. It starts at seven, doors open at 6:30. It clearly, it's free to attend, we need all the enthusiasm we can get. And of course, it is a fundraiser, so I'd be remiss to say, you know, there are ways online through the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg's Facebook page and webpage to donate. And we look forward to seeing everybody there and have a very successful event as we had in the past years. Thank you.
I'm going to do this, this is a public announcement as well. So Eagle House Supporters, which is the nonprofit that raises funds to support Eagle House, that is the Adult Activity Center, it supports programming, purchase of equipment, furniture, et cetera. They are searching for, they are in search of a president and treasurer. That's two different people, not one person saving, serving those two roles. They have asked Jamie Toll of Supportive Business Alternatives to assist with recruitment and coordination of filling those roles. And if anyone is interested, I'm sure there's going to be more on this, on the various Facebook pages. The message will get out there via flyer, Jamie will be pushing that out. But you can, if you are interested, reach out to Jamie Toll at Jamie@jamietoll.com, or his number is 617-365-4612. Thank you.
All right, and my public comment, I would like to extend a very happy birthday to the town manager.
You didn't have to do that.
Wish the happy part of the birthday part.
And he promises we will be out of here by 11:00.
Thank you.
All right, and yeah, mine's at the end of the week, all right. And any public comments from the public? I think I heard from Mr. Bowen on the way up that he has one. So, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you. Hi, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street, Jean Marie Price, she's with me. I'm just going to go in real quick, I have an email to read, Mr. Jeffries, I just might need an extra minute. I'm here to discuss the charter provision of Article 3, 3-5A and B, as a redundancy, and a conflict with the power and duties of the town manager, making that portion of this charter severable under the severability clause of the charter. I've mentioned this before. I have a letter here from Attorney General of a response from Adam Costa, on behalf of the town, on behalf of you, Ms. Town Manager, for an action of barring the Bullock Brothers by the commission from working in the cemetery. It is clear from this letter, the cemetery commission is a redundancy, which has in any powers or duties, but all work is done by the DPW by the direction of the town manager. I'm going to read that email. This is an email from Adam Costa to Attorney Polk at the Attorney General's office. Says, "I am town council for the town of Lunenburg. As you know, I responded to another inquiry of yours on Thursday. I am in receipt of your further email below, sent to Cemetery Commission Chairperson Nancy Fosiasco. I have since consulted with the town to gain a better understanding of the facts and circumstances underlining the complaint you have received. Below is the information reported to me, with my legal citations where appropriate to assist." I won't read the legal citations, he just cited a, the E code 360. Regarding the commission's alleged barring of Bullock Brothers from performing future work on the north and south cemeteries, be advised that legally, the commission has no such authority. First pursuant to the town charter, the day-to-day care and maintenance of the cemetery shall be under the supervision of the town manager," cited in code. "Second, and again pursuant to the charter, the town manager, not the commission, has full jurisdiction over the use of all town facilities and property, except property under the control of the school committee and the conservation commission," so cited. "Third, and yet again pursuant to the charter, the town manager is the town's chief procurement officer, and as such is responsible for procuring all services, supplies, material and equipment for all departments and activities of the town in the manner provided in general laws," so cited in E code. "Thus, it is the town manager, not the commission, who would vet and select from prospective bidders on a public contract to complete landscaping work, whether under general laws, Chapter 30, Section 39m, or general laws, Chapter 30b. The commission has no authority to solicit, select, or terminate vendors. With respect to Bullock Brothers, the town manager has not barred," and I thank you for that, "or blacklisted the company from any future bidding process. Regarding potential construction of a cemetery wall, there is no bidding process underway on that particular project. There has been no request for proposals issued, and there is no contract being awarded. Rather, there has been some discussion about a wall by the commission, and the commission performed preliminary work to identify the anticipated cost of construction of a stone wall, i.e. in compliance with prevailing wage law, so that the commission may pursue advocate for funding. At present, however, no funding has been appropriated or allocated. Let me know if you require further information." Does somebody see the contradiction? The town manager is in charge, but they said that the cemetery commission is doing the work of the town manager. And this is the problem. If I may, as a result of this, Ms. Town Manager, I am asking you that you need to get reimbursed pursuant to Sections 15 through 25 of Chapter 114 of all monies that this town has paid in tax for the care of the cemetery since 2001. That's a substantial amount of money. That money is in the treasury presently, that is in Ezekiel's control. The DPW is responsible for all that work through the cemetery superintendent, as I have mentioned before, through the collective bargaining agreement of which you signed, because you are the procurement officer, you are also the chief collective bargainer for that, okay? And you need to really take charge of the operations, and stop sitting back, and tell people in this town, "You are not to do that, you are to do this." And stop sitting there saying, "Why can't we all just get along?" This is a mantra that this town doesn't need. It needs debate, it needs challenge. And Mr. Franco raised that at the caucus. Why are there not enough challenges? Well, if you want to write my name in for cemetery commission, I promise to dissolve it. My name is John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Do we have any other public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Burden? You have to just repeat it at the microphone.
George Burden, 39 Courtland Circle, just wanted to address the January 9th meeting that you had, and a couple more things that I kind of want to address there. Last meeting, I asked you, Mr. Jeffries, about an attorney that you might use at your homeowners' associate property management company. I was wondering if you could tell us, if you can't tell us who it is, it wasn't the one that I named, maybe you can tell us who it is.
This is a public comment, Mr.-
So you will not answer it, but you answered last time in saying it wasn't yours, so you did answer that question. But it's just interesting that sometimes you will answer, sometimes you will not.
That is correct. Sometimes I will answer your questions, Mr. Burden, and most of the time I will not.
You will not, because it probably, you know, puts you in some bad light, right?
It becomes a back-and-forth between the two of us.
Yeah, it becomes a bad light. Why don't you just answer who the attorney is for your property management company?
Mr. Burden, I'm here as a slight-
To be public, right? You don't want to tell me, because I think it's involvement. Mr. Franco, you wanted to give me a litmus test, which we don't understand, honestly, but we want to go over a situation. You told us at that meeting, you said at that meeting, that the town has no authority over our HOA, right? Our homeowners association, where I'm being billed, everybody, $20,000 for violations. Seems a little outrageous, but we'll take care of that issue. But, Mr. Jeffries, you mentioned that that town has no authority over that association. However, we have 100 acres, approximately 100 acres in a conservation area that's been set aside by the town. We have a trustee that has not given us the books and records for over 10 years that we've asked for. We have a trustee that took an eighth of an acre of our common land, took the buffer out of the, took the buffer out of the, around the HOA, and made it his own land. What are you guys going to do about that?
Nothing.
That's a planning law.
Mr. Burden-
That's a planning.
Mr. Burden, we've offered for you to come here and talk with us.
Exactly.
You have declined. So you can continue to make a public comment.
You came here, and you chose, when I was not here, to persecute me. You chose to persecute me and my family. And it's not right, Mr. Jeffries, we have a lot of issues, and you know what they are, and you're going to say you have no issues about our HOA, where we have a trustee that has chopped down and ruined our common land, that is a buffer to the outside property that the town has put that planning, a special planning law, in place? Are you protecting this individual? Because you are, the town manager and the town will not give me videotape from the library where this gentleman has lied on a 911 call about my family and put my family in a safety, a safety issue. It's created a hostile and a safety issue, and you guys refuse to give me that tape to show that that can prove the issue. Why? Why would you do that? And then you protect this individual, and you protect him. Why? I'd love to know that, why?
I don't even know who you're talking about, Mr. Burden.
You don't know who I'm talking about?
I have no idea who you're talking about.
No, okay. You have no idea, huh?
I think I've said it three times, I want to say it a fourth time, I have no idea who you're talking about, Mr. Burden.
You have no idea about the whole situation that's going on in our HOA?
No, I'm aware of what you've advised me of, Mr. Burden, and again, if you want to talk about it, now, government is with the consent of the governed. So if you can point to any bylaw, any provision in the charter that says that the Select Board has authority over HOAs in town, you are describing a civil matter, which we've discussed to you several times.
Do you not have authority over the conservation land?
Do you want to finish your comments, I'm eating into your time?
The conservation land in our HOA. Answer that question.
Mr. Burden, I've already said.
You have no authority over that conservation land.
Do you have any other comments this evening?
No, I don't, but you can't even answer that question, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments from the public tonight? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to announcements. Any announcements this evening?
No.
All right. So communications from other boards, I see we have a representative from the water district.
Hi, everyone, Mark Burris, 211 Place, Commissioner for Lunenburg Water District. They've, we had a big, long update, but I'm going to just keep it short and sweet. As part of our public education for the PFAS outreach to the community, we have a planned community meeting coming up this Thursday. We've already had a couple of them, we've had some with the town boards, and we had another one with residents from the Hickory Hills area. And the townwide one is this Thursday, April 25th, at 6:30 at the high school. It will be televised. I encourage anybody that can attend to at least watch the meeting after the fact. It's going to have some new updated information, which we've been working very hard at trying to come up with the most cost-effective, comprehensive way to treat PFAS. Along with the community meetings, we've developed a newsletter. We have over 1,300 subscribers. The district has issued its first newsletter yesterday, containing educational information about PFAS and how PFAS infiltrates the water, and what the district plans to do about PFAS in the public drinking water supply. The district will continually utilize the social media and traditional media to share information about PFAS. Anybody that wants to sign up for this newsletter can go to our website, lunenburgwater.com. Real tough one, lunenburgwater.com. And I believe there's a pop-up now that you can sign in your email, and you'll automatically get these newsletters. That's about all I got for you guys tonight. I am, I am going to be looking for at some point where you're the highest board in town, and all the town buildings use town water. I would think that the Select Board might want to weigh in on what the water district is doing, and give their opinion, whether they support or don't support it. I would assume that a lot of the residents in town would be looking to you as the elected officials, and value your opinion, whether you like what we're doing as the water district and our plan, or not. So, again, I'd like to see, I'd hope to see all of you on Thursday. I know you have very busy schedules, but it should be a very good informational meeting. The goal is to get as much out at this meeting, and answer as many questions as we can, so that when it comes to our meeting scheduled for May-
16th?
May 16th, that we don't have a long, drawn-out meeting with a lot of the same questions. So the goal is to answer as many questions as we can this Thursday. Feel free, I know that some residents have been contacting the superintendent directly. We've received letters, we've answered those letters. We encourage people that have questions to reach out, and we'll do our best to answer those questions. It's a very big item, it's a lot of money, and based on now, the government, the EPA, has now dropped the allowable limit to four parts per trillion. The DEP, which is the mass regulatory authority, will have to adopt that. And then we're looking at about five years, maybe six years, to where we're going to have to respond to that. Our current plan has us responding in about four years. So we're ahead of the game right now. We've done a lot of work to try to make this as affordable as we can to the residents. Again, this is going to be a mandate, so it's something that we have to take care of. Thank you, and hope to see you guys on Thursday.
Before you step away, Mr. Burris-
Yes, sir.
What time is the meeting on the 16th? Because this is a meeting and a vote.
This is a meeting and a vote, I believe it'll be 6:30 as well? Yeah, 6:30 as well. That will be a meeting and a vote. It'll be a vote on a specific, on accepting the SRF funding, which is still kind of a moving target. We're working on, on how much will be available to us, and what we can apply it to. And it won't be on the entire master plan, because we are going to have to go through another round of applying for funding, another round of, another vote for, to continue the plan. So it's not, when people look at, it's about a 42, 45? $45 million budget, it's pretty big. But we're looking at about 32 will be this vote, is the approximate value. So I hope to see everybody there. Any other quick questions I can answer?
Is that the only question on the warrant for that meeting?
That's going to be the only question on the warrant, is going to be, I believe, right now, currently, we are just voting on one scenario. We aren't, we aren't trying to do two scenarios. We haven't finalized the warrant yet for that meeting, but I believe the goal and what we're thinking of right now is just one question, without any options.
And do you have information about the average cost per customer?
Yes, we'll have all of that on Thursday. I don't have it handy. We do have it broken down by quarter. I believe our best option is to go for 30 years, to stretch this out, to reduce the impact to the public. So that's kind of, you know, I realize a cost is a, is a, is a big issue. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Okay, and I might, I might come back, you know, once we have the meeting Thursday. I, definitely, we'd be back before we have our meeting. I encourage the board, reach out to the superintendent with any questions. I would like to sell some, come to some point where the board either supports what we're doing, or doesn't.
I think that in order for us to weigh in on it, we'll have to get, you know, basically, your whole information packet.
Yep.
If you can forward that over to the board, and I'm sure that, if you can remind us, what are the additional dates of the public education component? So you have this Thursday at 6:30 PM.
And that, and other than that, we will have public comment and some discussion probably at our regular meetings, but we have fuel and fire between that. And then we will have the, the meeting in May.
And then lunenburgwater.com.
And lunenburgwater.com, yep. The meeting on Thursday will be recorded, so I encourage people to watch that meeting. I will talk with the superintendent and have him forward you the informational packet that goes along with that meeting. Any questions? He's, he's there, and he's, he's been talking about this a lot, so he's ready if you have any questions.
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. So, Mr. Chair, with the request, I mean, it's not often that we get a request to weigh in on the Lunenburg Water District events, but I think we should probably schedule something, you know, I would probably say no later than after the, our next meeting after town meeting, to, that'll give us two weeks lead time to their meeting, and invite the commissioners and the superintendent to discuss this, if they're honestly looking for our opinion. And since it does affect town buildings and lots of residents, not every resident, but lots of residents, so.
All right. We can discuss that and figure out a date that would work. I can think that that Tuesday, right after town meeting, I know that I'm not going to be here, but I'll see if the Tuesday before the election, Mr. Franco's unfortunate last meeting with us, if that would be an opportune time. Okay. Any other communications from other boards? All right, we're to go to our, let's see, I'm going to jump here. We're to go to appointments, reappointments and resignations, ratification, town manager's appointment of Police Officer Joel Ortega.
Thank you. I'll ask the chief to come forward to read his letter. Yes.
Thank you, thank you for having us again tonight. This is an exciting night for us. Just a quick shameless plug, we are the champions of Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader? Just want to let that know. We will have a team there on Friday. I do have a couple representatives here that were on that team.
All right.
Thank you again for having us. As you're aware, Devin O'Brien has accepted a position with the Massachusetts State Police. His resignation was effective April 19th of 2024. We are fortunate to have somebody ready to go, a reserve officer who has completed the Bridge Academy, which brings him up to the training of a full-time officer. He completed that within a relatively short period of time and completed the hours that were required. I am pleased to recommend Reserve Officer Joel Ortega for an appointment to the position of a full-time officer. Officer Ortega has completed all the training requirements in accordance with department policy, the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Committee, the Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission, and the Bridge Academy, like I stated earlier. He has received a waiver from the NPTC, which exempts him from attending the requirements of attending a basic recruit academy. Officer Ortega has successfully completed a background investigation, pre-employment physical, and a psychological examination. He has also completed the department's required 250 hours of field training. Officer Ortega has been with us since 2021, when he was a reserve officer, and we appointed him back then. His commitment is evident, as he continues to take cruiser shifts, desk shifts, prison watches, and details when they're offered to him. He often volunteers his time to the department and to the community. Recent events is the senior barbecue at the Eagle House, the annual Memorial Day services, and recently, the Earth Day cleanup, he was part of the cleanup crew. Officer Ortega is a resident of Fitchburg and graduated in 2013 from Lemson High School's School Center of Technical Education and Innovation. He is also a 2018 graduate of Monmouth Chusse Community College. Where he obtained a degree, an associate's degree in criminal justice. I'm going to start using his first name. Joel is fluent in two languages, English and Spanish. As previously stated, when I appointed him as, or had him appointed as a reserve officer, he was well thought of. He was, it was stated that he was one of the best human beings on the planet. I would have to attest to these statements, working with him and seeing him at scenes and dealing with the public, it is just outstanding. He's a great fit with our department, and I would be remiss if you didn't see that infectious smile when he walks in the door, and it just makes, brightens everybody's day. We had offered him a full-time position about a year and a half ago, and it just didn't work out from family situation. I am ecstatic that he's able to take this position now and accept an offer of a full-time position. I'm pleased to present Joel.
Thank you, Chief, for those kind words. Put it nice and quick. Thank you for this opportunity. Completely blessed to be here, to have this awesome step forward in this career. Can't do it without my wife there, big support there from the family, and my local staff, the chief, the lieutenant, my colleagues here to support me. Thank you, thank you so much, as well as you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just have a comment that it's, you know, as people leave to go to other places, as with who you're replacing, it's nice to see the reserve officer troop being so ready, and for people like yourself being prepared to step in so quickly. I'm glad the second opportunity came for you, and again, it's a testament to the hiring practices of the police department. Wish you good luck.
No questions, but I will second what Mr. Alonso said, and just glad that you were ready to jump in, so.
I just want to thank you for the service you've already rendered to the town, and, and for stepping, you know, being able to step into this role now. So, thank you.
Here, here. I have full confidence that you will, you're already a good part of the team. I have full confidence that you will thrive in this role. So I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Joel Ortega to the position of full-time police officer.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, this is always an exciting opportunity in people's lives. That's usually a comment I make during these, during these moments. But I know that we have the chance with you in your initial appointment to kind of, to go through it all. So I know that for your family, this is a, definitely a memorable day, and well-deserved, so. If it's going to be all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And please, to Mrs. Ortega, don't feel obliged to stick around for the whole meeting, if you don't want to. Thank you. All right. And Chief, my only request is, if you look at the three guys who were on that team last year, maybe one or two of them are going to be off this Friday, so we can have a chance. All right. We're going to go to our 7:15 appointment. This is an update from our DPW director, Bill Bernard, and Chapter 90 Funding and Road Drainage Projects. Good to see you, Mr. Bernard.
Glad to be here. Wait in the way. I'll move in a little bit, so I can actually see. All right. You have the slide?
Yes, yes.
So I put together a slideshow, so we'll start with, what is Chapter 90? So Chapter 90 is monies that the state gives us under the Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, surprise. It provides funding to municipalities, to, to capital improvements on roadways. And every city and town gets a portion of it. So the funding levels are established by the Massachusetts Legislature every year, and it's distributed, again, to all 351 municipalities. It hasn't changed, it's been $200 million per year since 2012, rather flat. There's been a big push by cities and towns to have that increase, but so far, no, not yet.
Well, I think the state's telling that, road costs have been flat for the last 12.
Yeah, obviously. All right, so how much do we receive? So they have a formula based on road miles and population and employment. So in fiscal '20, we- So in fiscal '20, we had 456,000, '21 was 415,000, '22 was 414, almost 15,000. '23 was 420,000 more or less. '24 this year, we got 418, but I think because of that push by the cities and towns, they came up with a couple of new programs. One was called the Fair Share Program and another one was Rural Roadways Program. So we did get a little more funding there. Talk about those programs a little bit. So again, this year we got the our regular allotment, which was 418,000 and we got 240,000 from Fair Share and almost 22,000 from the Rural Roads Program. So the Fair Share was an amendment to the state constitution that provided resources for education and transportation through additional taxes on people who make over a million dollars per year. And then the Rural Roads Program was another act of the legislation that to support construction and reconstruction of municipal ways, mostly on rural rural communities, but it was shared to all communities. And those funds can be used for any Chapter 90 program, any any project. So how much do we have right now? So between FY '20 and and now, we've spent $890,000, but we do have $2 million to spend right now. So what can Chapter 90 funding be used for? It's quite the list, so anything, basically anything related related to roads and, you know, drainage and anything on a road, guardrails, shoulders, sidewalks, any kind of road maintenance, if you're paving or crack sealing. Anything to do with traffic, so pavement markings, signs, traffic signals. It can also be used for bridges and culverts and there's a few other, you know, right away acquisitions towards building a new road, say, or or building a a new bridge, something like that, and you can use it for street lighting and tree planting. We can also use it to purchase certain equipment, so again, big list. You know, anything from backhoes, air compressors, concrete mixers, excavators, generators, larger trucks, sweepers, basically anything that you use to construct or maintain a road. It can also be used for hiring design engineers for to design projects to improve your roads or build new roads. And it can be used for planning purposes and can also be used for garages to house your road building equipment and a few other things. So I figured, talk about how Chapter 90 works. So Mass DOT is takes the, they handle the money, so they provide guidance and assistance. They manage contracts and accounts with the towns and they supply pre-qualification for bidding and they distribute the reimbursements for the work that we do. So what the town has to do, we have to plan and prioritize our projects. We have to submit that project to Mass DOT for their approval before we go ahead with it. We have to hire consultants and contractors to do the work and we have to oversee the work. And then once the work's done, we have to submit a request for reimbursement for the work. So I just touched on that a little bit. Again, we have to put in a project request. We have to make sure if we're using the Chapter 90 money, that the contractors that are doing the work are pre-qualified by Mass DOT. And then we do the work, we oversee it and then we ask for reimbursement. All right, so the next bunch of slides are how I propose we're gonna spend the money. So fiscal year '24, which is what we're in now, I've put in a request for just over $700,000 to do the milling and paving on Lemson Shirley Road and Pioneer Drive and Fort Point, Fort Pond Road, which that work started last night and it's it's again tonight and tomorrow night, the milling portions. And then we have to do some drainage work next week and then the first week in May at night we'll be paving. So just a heads up to residents, if you can avoid that area while we're working, it's 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 best. We'll we'll get you through, but you might be delayed. Also in fiscal '24, want to purchase an air compressor and then, you know, jackhammer and other implements to go with that. I've gotten a few quotes on that, so I'm close to doing that. And would spend some money on engineering for sidewalk improvements and new sidewalks that the school committee had requested on Chestnut Street to get the kids from the high school over to Marshall Park safely. All right, fiscal '25. So every year, you know, we get it on July 1st, or give or take, we get new money. So I've conservatively just put 415,000 because that's about what we've been getting. So I've plugged that in to every year for the next five years. Hopefully it's more, but. So next year, proposing to spend some money on the our pavement management plan and for drainage improvements at a at least three locations. And then hopefully by then we have a contract put together to start the sidewalk repairs and the new sidewalks. So the, right, I said we're gonna use some for the pavement management, but we do have our own money for pavement management. So in fiscal '25, it'd be $550,000 and every year it goes up by 50,000 with the goal of reaching a million dollars. So this graph shows in fiscal '25, we'll need Chapter 90 money, $69,000. That's based on estimate put together by our consultant that did our pavement management plan. They estimated how much we're gonna spend each year. So you could see we we need our regular money, our operational money, and it needs to grow and we need to supplement it with the Chapter 90 funds. All right, fiscal '26, so I have drainage repairs and or bridge and culvert repairs. So right now we have a consultant working for us, putting together a bridge culvert repair plan. They were in town last week. I went out, looked at a bunch of the bridges and culverts and a lot of them need help and some of them need replacement, so we're gonna need the Chapter 90 funding there. We'll probably need more money, maybe capital funds. That remains to be seen, but that'd be my best guess. And while so in fiscal '26, looking to spend some Chapter 90 money on pavement management, as shown in that previous slide. And then, like I said, we could buy equipment, so looking to purchase a mini excavator with a trailer. You'll see a lot of the next slides, everything has drainage repairs. I get calls at least once a week for different problems with drainage, so. I think this mini excavator, that would help us do a lot, some of the work in-house instead of hiring out, try to save some money that way. Fiscal '27, again, drainage repairs and pavement management. Same for '28, the drainage repairs and or bridge repairs and pavement management and '29, the same and '30, the same. I hope I didn't go too fast.
No such thing. Are you at the question slide?
I am at the question slide.
Do you have any questions from the board?
I do. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, and these are in no particular order. So how did we get to accumulate $2 million, which would mean that four years or so of Chapter 90 money was unspent?
Right. I think it's because of the transition in DPW Directors. You know, it took me a little time to get my feet wet and figure out, you know, what it needed to be done. The previous director was here only a short time and I think that's part of the reason why we haven't spent a whole lot of it in the last few years.
Second question is, is there any benefit? Two-part question. First of all, do the monies that are in accrued, because we don't get the money, right? It's just on an account with Mass DOT.
Right.
Does that expire at any point?
It does not.
Okay, and so the the second part of that question along the same lines is, is there any benefit to not spending it to zero at any point? That would be one to you and maybe even through the chair to the town manager. I don't know. I I want to, I want to pose it as a potential, as a potential benefit that is unforeseen to me, but I just want to know.
I guess one benefit is, you know, if we kept some, if something major happened, we'd have a little bit of money to take care of that. On the other hand, construction costs go up every year, so better spend it now than spend a dollar now than two dollars later, right?
Okay. Then my last question is, oh.
I was just gonna add on to your first question that you had of why we've accumulated up to the $2 million. So part of that was the additional money that was unanticipated with the Fair Share funding and the Rural Roads. So that's about 260,000 of that amount, as well as we were spending down the debt exclusion amounts during those years as we were completing the pavement, the prior pavement management plan. So that was, that was the plan at that point in time to spend down those funds and the budget funds before touching Chapter 90 funds.
Okay. And that leads me to my last question, as changing my hat to Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. And I don't mean this to sound critical, although it may sound critical in its wording, but there were a list of things, and some of them on your list now, that you came to the capital planning with tools and things that you didn't even need to come to us with, that if they were funded, would have taken away from other projects that don't have $2 million in Chapter 90 funding. I'm just wondering, I mean, that that's a hard thing for me to look at and say and not comment on. It certainly looks suspect. Let's put it that way.
Agreed. Again, it wasn't, it wasn't on purpose, that's for sure. I think it's just, again, me getting my feet wet, finding out what our needs were. You know, when I put that capital list together, I was thinking just equipment, equipment, right? A lot. And I wasn't thinking about using it here at Chapter 90, it's just.
Can I add to that as well?
Sure.
There's going to be more needs than there is money. So even with using Chapter 90 funding, pavement management funding, other grant funding that we receive, there and once we have the bridge and culvert plan, you're, the town will see how many dollars are needed to keep all these drainage projects going, all our bridges and culverts repaired. It's gonna exceed what we have available and with all those resources.
Well, I mean, so my response to that is, yes, of course, being involved in government as long as I have, I I know that. I know that there's always gonna be more projects than our pricing. All I'm, all I meant to highlight or underline in this case is that, you know, it just, we have X amount of capital funds and given the tax abatements of last year, even less than usual, and we're vying for things that didn't need to be on the list. And so again, I'd be remiss in my job if I didn't point it out. This is not, you know, put out your, put out your hand, let's hit it with a yardstick. That's not the point. The point is, I want people to recognize that that looks, it has a bad optics to it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm not, you know, trying to project any ill intentions on anybody. But we have to be cognizant of how things look, is my point.
If I can.
I was just gonna add on to that as well. The DPW Director and I had talked about that we needed to put a plan in place for Chapter 90 because there hasn't been one. So at that time, the capital planning process was not even in draft form as well, conceptually, what things could be done with it. So at that point in time as well, that wasn't in place.
I want to add on to Mr. Alonso's comments. Because that was the first thing that when I, when I saw that this was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, that was kind of my first gut reaction as well. I think we understood that there was money sitting there. I don't, I don't know if I, and I understood it was more than a million dollars. I don't know if I understood it was two. And, you know, when when the Capital Planning Committee goes through their process and then allocates funding for equipment, right? And as Mr. Alonso is saying, other entities don't have a pot of $2 million sitting there. And so as they're doing their assessments of what is the pressing and urgent need, you know, it's kind of like, you know, helpful information that that somehow wasn't mentioned. But I wanted to continue in that thought process about ARPA. Because one of the restrictions on ARPA was that we can't save it and that we're not allowed to save the ARPA money and we're not allowed to not expend money that we were already planning to expend, right? In other words, we can't say, well, now we're gonna fund this through ARPA and so we're gonna save other money that we had already previously planned to spend. So, you know, I think this is a larger question, which is not really for you, but it's for the board and the town manager, which is, we may now need a legal opinion on whether or not the ARPA funds that went in the direction of DPW, whether or not they need to be, whether or not they were appropriately allocated. Because the last thing we want is to find ourselves in a situation where something's being clawed back because we were pocketing $400,000 a year in money that could have been spent on things that we chose to spend ARPA money on. My other comment is, as I look at your plan and, Bill, I mean, I wanna be, you know, you you can count on me to be straightforward. I think that everything after basically July 1st of '25, I think I'm correct? Yes, nope? So July 1st of '26, it's kind of cut and paste same one and the same. In which you're saying we're gonna have $415,000 of anticipated costs. Do you have the actual plan for, I know that typically, as we've heard reports from you in the past, now the DPW Directors, it was kind of a long-range plan on roads based on conditions of roads, what was being prioritized. Do you have that to kind of match up to what you're expecting funds to be expended on over the coming five years, six years?
Yeah, for for pavement management, it's slide 14. Yeah.
Uh, okay.
With the graph, yeah.
Was that this large graph that we saw, as far as what they actually are, as far as what's gonna be worked? So in other words, as we look at fiscal year '26, and it says $415,000 anticipated Chapter 90 funding, what is that going to be used for?
With specific roadways?
Yeah.
I have that plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think, and that's kind of where I'm getting at, I think it would be helpful in this presentation if if that information was added to it. Because I'm sure that you're gonna need to give this to other, you know, the Finance Committee, I'm sure, has been pounding you about this. So I'm sure they're gonna want to know in a greater level of detail, as would I, kind of what what are we working on every year? Because as Mr. Alonso has identified, you know, we're now four or five years of not really expending the money. And our roads are generally in good condition.
Yep, so I have the pavement management plan. If it's not already on the website, I'll make sure it gets up there so everybody can see it.
I believe it is on the website.
Mr. Chair, if I may just say, the slide that the DPW is talking about, it's not like we haven't spent money. It just hasn't come from, it just hasn't come from Chapter 90.
Right.
Obviously, they're spending 600-plus thousand dollars a year on pavement management. It's just come from, you know, the
Right.
the capital. It's just come from, you know, the capital exclusion, so.
Thank you for correcting that comment. I think my comment here, though, about the plan that you have for the buildings, whether it's on the website or not, I think that as you're presenting a Chapter 90, where is the money going? I think it's helpful to have a little more detail here beyond anticipated Chapter 90 funding. But I mean, I think you guys have done, as you know, Bill, I think highly of you and I think you've done a great job at the DPW department. So I know we've already had that presentation. I know that that level of detail already exists. I think they might want to be married.
Yep. That's a good comment.
And I would just ask for us to be kind of quiet in the gallery today, please. But thank you.
So Mr. Alonso's questions checked off three of mine off my list. So I understand the program that there are state funds, we don't have them, and it's reimbursement-based. But I'm still not exactly sure specifically how it works. So do we have to allocate funds and actually pay for these projects first in order to get reimbursed? That's what a reimbursement is.
Right. We expend, get the project submitted, approved.
To the state.
Expend those funds and then get reimbursed within that same fiscal year. So it's a deficit until we're reimbursed for those funds.
Right. So are these like capital projects that we decide to get reimbursed for, or things that we allocate?
They've typically been road projects.
Okay.
So that project submittal form goes to Mass DOT for certain roads. They approve the project and then we move forward with the project and then request reimbursement once those invoices are in.
Okay.
If I can add on to your question, I think what Mr., I think that what Caesar's getting at is where does the money come from in the first instance?
Right, before we're reimbursed by the state.
The town has to output the money and then gets reimbursed for that.
Okay.
And we was time it, so we make sure we time it within that fiscal year before the year closes out.
So we would have to allocate money and pay for all these projects first and then get reimbursed? Is really just what I wanted, like explicit clarification on?
I don't know.
There is no allocation.
There's no allocating, right. There's no allocating, so it's through the Finance Department. There's no request. But I do, for safety's sake, just in case people want to do risk mitigation, we get the project approved before we start it. So they've already approved it, and then we just have to work with the Finance Department about when will we have the money to pay for it before we get the reimbursement. So that has to be coordinated with, you know, with the town manager and the Finance Director so that we know we have the money.
All right. Thank you.
And we want to time it with the end of the fiscal year because we don't want to expend those funds within that fiscal year and not get a reimbursement within that time period too. Because then we would have to, it would come off our balance sheet as far as, it would be added into the next fiscal year.
Well, all my questions were answered from Mr. Alonso's questions. So I'm just going to say, I like this. I like that we're actually utilizing these funds, that we have like a comprehensive multi-year plan. And these projects seem good, addresses, you know, like drainage issues and all of that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, one of the advantages of being fifth of five is that you pretty much covered it for me. So, and also, thank you for presenting this because that has been a little bit of a mystery for me, too. It's like, what is going on with this pot of money that's sitting there? So now there's a sort of a roadmap as to how it's going to be expended, and I get it. And thank you for all the questions and the follow-ups because you cleared it up. And we can always count on Mr. Alonso for a good grilling, a good cross-examination. I got all my questions answered. So, all right.
Mr. Chair, just two more final comments. Number one, to your question about ARPA, I don't think that what we've allocated with this board's vote to the DPW with ARPA fits into the category that you defined. What you weren't allowed to do is have a project that was already funded in another way and then pull that funding away and put ARPA in. That's what I think you weren't allowed supposedly to do. The fact that we gave it to, we voted to give it to projects already, you know, otherwise every town, they would tell you, well, deplete all your, you know, your funds in all different cases, all stabilization funds. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to use anything because, of course, towns have money in reserve. But that wasn't the effect, at least to my knowledge. Second, although, again, I didn't want to be overly hard, I will now end on a better note, which is when this came to light in the Finance Committee and people were talking about it and buzzing about it, all different, you know, corners, I did indicate to somebody, you know, finding out that you have $2 million that you knew you had is a whole lot better than the reverse, okay? Not having $2 million that you thought you had. So this is a good problem, not a bad problem. It's good that it was brought to light. It's good that it's out there in the open so we know, you know, what the funding is from this board and the townspeople, et cetera. But, you know, it was a pleasant surprise, not a horrible surprise about, oh no, what are we going to do? And thank you.
You're welcome.
And I tacked on to Mr. Alonso's question, so my comments remain. You know, I just think there's a level of specificity that you may want to just contribute to this. You know, I think when Mr. and Mrs. Joe Public, you know, sometimes have challenges navigating multiple things to get a concept of a plan. So sometimes it's just helpful to marry.
Agreed. Yeah. Sometimes I just get caught up in the lingo and forget that everybody doesn't know my lingo, right?
Yeah. No, but otherwise, as always, Bill, thank you for your time. Do you have any, thank you as always for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right. We're running a little behind here. We're going to meet with our Finance Director Ezekiel Ayala and Fire Chief Patrick Sullivan on abatement of ambulance receivables. Good to see you, Chief.
Good evening. So basically what this is, is a request to clear up the uncollectibles out of the ambulance receipts that we've had over several years. The vast majority of this, when we bill out for the ambulance, we bill out at our rate, anywhere from 60% to 65% of our patients that we transport are on Medicare/Medicaid, which means we have to accept federal, the federal amount for that, which is currently about 64% of what we actually bill out. That balance is uncollectible. That's called an adjustment. So we're looking to get that off the books from a few years back. Also in there are ones that the person may have passed away, person didn't leave a forwarding address, the bill is still tied up with a motor vehicle accident, any number of different reasons why we may not have seen the money. After a point, we're writing these off. Other than the adjustments, these do go to a collection agency and we still try to chase them down. But I think Ezekiel can explain a little bit better on how this is just getting these numbers off of our books as a negative.
Yes. So going through the numbers this year, trying to clean up some old balances that's gone back to 2019. So whatever retaliation has brought, the abatement amount of $464,095.55. I believe the board received the aging detail, which involves everything, but not all of those are uncollectible.
Could you give us that total one more time?
Sure. It's $464,095.55.
You're asking us to write off $464,000 of debt? All right. So let me start with all the questions because I'm already a no. So let me get to a yes. Is anyone, anyone on this list a current resident of Lunenburg and a property owner?
I am not aware of any.
Has it been scrubbed against current property owners?
I do not know on that fact.
All right. So the first, my first thought is...
We do go through, if they can't find addresses, we help them, you know, the billing company find addresses, try to track these people down. As far as how many of them actually are still residents, or some of them maybe it's going to an estate at this point.
So, I mean, why not put liens against the estate? I mean, if someone has, if they're a resident in town, why not put a lien against their property?
Not sure if you can do that with a medical bill.
I don't believe we can.
I don't believe you can. I don't quote me 100% on that, but I believe when you get into medical billing, I don't believe you can.
I don't think medical bill applies to those types of liens.
Are we 100% sure of that or are we 99% sure?
99.5. I'm leaving a little buffer, but I'm pretty sure medical, same thing for bankruptcy. I mean, you can go to bankruptcy.
Right.
It just applies.
I would suspect the vast majority of that number is those adjustments. That's probably three-quarters of that.
Or what adjustments?
The adjustments of 60% to 65% of our transports are Medicare/Medicaid patients. We have to accept what the federal government pays for that, which is only about 64% of what our bill is. So that other part doesn't get paid. We can't chase the resident or the person for that money. So that ends up just getting written off. Yeah. Yeah, offset adjustment. Yeah.
So the conversation, all right, let me just keep going down the list. So Medicare adjustments, so there's possibly 0.5% chance that there's other people on that we're confident that we can't put liens against people's properties related to medical bills. I would like to get to 100% on that one. The other thing is, of the Medicare adjustments, I get that, understand it, completely on board with it. You know, what I'm having, what I'm trying to visualize here is the conversation with Mrs. Resident, who just got a 30% increase in her tax bill, who says, you guys just wrote off $464,000 of debt. And did you verify that everyone on the list currently doesn't, you know, were you sure that you couldn't put a lien against their property? Are you sure that they don't still live in town? Are you sure that they don't have an estate that's willing to pay it? You know, those are kind of the main things that I would be concerned about because we're talking half a million dollars. So it's a lot of money. I want to be 100% that everyone on the list, that there's no way to collect from them or their estate. If they've passed away, you know, I understand that that happens. But if they left property behind and we can get our value back out of that property, then I would much prefer for us to try. Unless we can. If we're forbidden from it, we're forbidden. It is what it is.
And I can't give you that 5% right now, but these are not just ignored after a while. The billing company spends quite a bit of time chasing these down, tracking them down, and that, then eventually they go to collection.
Okay.
And they're there. So, and that's part of what, they're being written. We're not eventually going to lose out on the money, but it's being written off as a financial function. The building, you know, the collection agency is still chasing these people and that. When we see something out of them, that's tough.
Even though we've written them off, if eventually they can't collect, we still get the funds for them.
Right.
It goes to a third-party collection agency first financially.
So is it easy to separate from this list, the Medicare from the non-Medicare? Is that an easy task to do, like a column in a spreadsheet to sort?
The list I currently have, I do not, but I can go back and probably request that.
But is it easy? Like, I'm not...
I don't.
It's not our report comes from, so we would have to ask them.
We would have to ask them if they can break that out that way.
Okay. That's all I have. And I apologize to the board for jumping in immediately. I try to go last. You know, as you can tell, I wanted to get moved from a no to a yes. I'm still a no, but I think that I can get to a yes without you guys having to come back and appear once you get the rest of the information. To me, it's easy. It's easy, Bill.
Since you started in that one, let's just go the other way. That way you could be second, not fourth.
So over what, first of all, you do raise another question. I mean, as a practical matter, if we say no, what happens? I mean, like, as a practical matter.
We would have the debt.
Stays on the books.
Stays on the books is debt.
And our auditor will say, you need to write it off.
Right. I mean, it sounds like it's going to wind up in the same place eventually, right? So over what period of time were this many of these accumulated?
It's going back to 2002, I believe, actually.
Oh, wow. Okay. Okay.
We were under the impression that we'd cleaned up a lot of those in 2019.
2019, but there were some going back to 2002.
We did something like this once before, but...
2019 was the last time we did.
We've done it, yeah.
I mean, like while I was here, but, okay, okay.
The plan had been to do it a lot more often. COVID kind of threw that off to the kilter. And on my end, I've been much more focused on the front end of the operation with the paramedics than this end of it.
The problem, I mean, like as a, like going after these things, it's like, it's a million, like it's literally hundreds, it looks like, of, you know, $2, $3, $500. And, you know, the effort to go after, it's not like one lump sum for 20 grand that somebody owes you, where it's worth it to like, you know, put some firepower behind it and like go through the tedium of trying to collect it. It's like a bunch of little annoying debts. And, I don't know, it's really more of a comment. I mean, yeah, why not be 100% on that, on that question you have open? But so it's really just questions. I have nothing, nothing at the moment, like in terms of pointing us in any direction to offer. It's just collecting information. So.
So it doesn't really seem like it's practical to do anything other than collections, which is what we're doing now.
About all you can do, unfortunately.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, it's a lot of money. But I'm also like sensitive to the fact that these are medical debts. So, you know, I don't really know how much I would be willing to like punish someone for not paying a medical debt that maybe they can't. So, you know, I'm sort of where I'm at right now. So.
We do have the abatement process for some people that are very financially strapped, but unfortunately, we don't see that. You folks sign off on them and we only get a couple of those a year usually.
And like you said, even if we write it off, we can still collect the money if it's sent to us.
Right. It's still out there if it happens and it comes back. We still do see it.
So effectively, it doesn't really change anything. We can still collect the money if it's sent in, you know, or just write it off.
It affects the balance sheet.
Clearing the books.
Yeah.
But isn't there a limit on that? Isn't that like seven years or something like that from when the debt was incurred to how long you can collect on it? Isn't that governed by the federal law of seven years?
I don't believe so.
I don't. Don't know.
But I thought debts expired at some point.
Oh, no. Yeah, they do expire when you die.
I know there are certain rules around medical debts.
They're just not your problem then.
Right, right. Well, your debts expire when you die. They just become somebody else's.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm supportive of it. I was initially, then I was sort of on the fence for a second, and then I thought about it a little more. I don't think I really support doing anything beyond collections for this, and it's probably not practical. So.
Just a couple of questions. So I'm assuming, I know the answer to this is probably privacy laws, but we don't have the, I understand the patient name, but we don't have the call dates, which is why we had to ask. So the call dates on our sheet, it's not there. So we didn't know how far back these go.
Yeah.
Okay. That, I mean, I don't know. If we could, if, in the future, if we... What?
You had the call dates initially. I had put in an aging report that had call dates, but it had the wrong total at the bottom, so I didn't want to confuse issue because we didn't have that breakdown with the 464,095.
Well, I wouldn't want to see the call dates because, again, it's privacy law, I'm sure. So what, in the future, if we could break this down by year, by fiscal year that these are from. So you said some of these go down to 2002. The one question I have, I mean, we're talking, I agree with the chair, it's a large number. But it's also over, now you're telling me it's over 22 years, so I don't know how much. The real question is, how much do we do in billing a year? I want to get a scope of, is this $400-plus thousand, is this, is this 2% of what we bill? 5% of what we bill? I mean, it'd be interesting to note how much we billed since 2002 and how much we're being asked to write off.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but again, 60% to 65% of our total transports fall into Medicare/Medicaid. So you're, you're going to lose out on 30, you're basically almost 40% of whatever we bill out for that. Then there's the other ones that, again, they're a small fraction of that, that they may end up going to collection down the road. But it's the adjustments that kill us and complain to Washington, unfortunately. That's a whole nother story.
That's swinging way too far up. I can't even swing, I can't even swing at Boston with school funding. So the chance of me getting anything happen at a federal level, probably nothing. As far as practical matter, I know that this is going to just be, if we say no, it's just going to get flagged on the audit. It's going to, it's going to be something for, you know, the Finance Director and the Town Manager to have to deal with until we eventually do what we're being asked to do tonight. So of course, I'm for it.
Going forward, we're planning on doing it on a set schedule. So when you hear this, it's going to be a lot smaller number, but you'll be hearing this from us more often.
Let me ask you this. I mean, and I don't even know if I'm supposed to say this out loud, but I'm going to say this out loud. I mean, I'm assuming since we know what our costs of running the ambulance are and we know what the reimbursement rates are for the large percentage of our trips that we're making, I'm assuming that those are all calculated into the cost of doing business.
It's, we don't make money at this.
No, no, I understand that, but I don't want to lose money doing it.
We offset our, we offset the cost of the service. And that's a conversation about increasing the rates that we haven't done for a long time for another day, that they'll hear from me again down the road a little bit on that because we haven't gone up in quite a while. And again, but with the Medicare/Medicaid, it's not going to be this huge jump because the Medicare rates don't change. We'll charge more, but they're just going to write off more on that end. So there is some increase that will help offset the cost because we've added people. So there is some increase that will help offset the cost, because we've added people, we've gone to the paramedic level, but the rest of it is covered as an emergency service by the town. You know, we're just trying to offset some of our cost.
All right. So, um, I think it would be helpful, as Mr. Alonso just noted, you know, I would consider that any money is received from someone, a Medicare patient, that, you know, partial payments, a payment, and I'm really more interested in, you know, the percent, completely the percent uncollected, of of the total amount of people that got ambulance assistance, the percentage, uh, that remains that just didn't pay anything, and how much we're writing off of that. Because if that percentage is high, uh, then, and and we can put liens against people's houses, then I'm gonna be all in favor of it. Uh, I hear, you know, I understand that, you know, there are a lot of times, as, as Mr. Nuzola just noted, that when people have medical bills, they can least afford it, but if you own a home in Lunenburg and you've owned it for more than four years, unless you've been heavily borrowing against it, you probably have some equity. Um, and you probably have equity more than seven hundred bucks. And so a lien, to me, would be quite appropriate if it's legally allowed. I don't want to question anyone's professionalism here tonight. I think it's pretty clear that everyone here is a professional, that the information we received is good, it's solid. Um, I want to get more information on the percent uncollected. I want to get more information on, um, I want to get more information on separating out from this, the Medicare recipients versus the non-Medicare recipients, and, you know, if the advice is, you know, we have to say yes, there's no option to say no, then we shouldn't even be having this conversation to begin with, and we need to write a policy that gives you the ability to write these things off, so that way we're not taking our time in these meetings to do something that, you know, you clearly think needs to happen anyway. So to me, there's kind of two paths forward. Change the rules, that way we don't have to take the time to do this anymore, uh, or, you know, maybe a little more information on, on what the stuff is. But I'll leave it to my colleagues in terms of what they want to do for tonight. I don't think you guys need to come back, but I think it would be helpful to get a little more information. But I'll leave it to my colleagues for what my colleagues would like to do.
Well, based on how it all went, it, I was the only one that was sounding undecided previously, but based on how the discussion has unfolded and what the practical reality is, and where we're gonna wind up anyway, I'm supporting just writing it off, too.
Is there a motion?
Uh, except I move to write off the, uh, ambulance debts, uh, in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, uh, ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents as presented.
Second. Any additional discussion? I'm going to vote no. However, I do support writing off the overwhelming majority, if not all, of this debt. I want to be a hundred percent sure to other voters at home and residents at home that we can't put liens against people's properties. So in that absence, ninety-nine point five percent is usually okay with me. Um, usually, like, ninety-five is okay with me. But tonight, on this one, I want to be a hundred, so I will respect the decision of my colleagues. I trust the professionalism in the room, and, uh, and we'll have, we have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, just one comment, just to your comment, Mr. Chair. I'm, I support the information you're asking for. So I will, I will vote yes on this motion, but I will support the idea that it would be good information to have that breakdown anyway, so that we have it in the future, and then to ask that it be placed on any further abatements, you say it's going to be regular whenever that is, that, that, that kind of breakdown be made at the time. Uh, so, yeah, I would, I would support that.
All right. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. No, the motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then I think there was a general update that you were gonna do, Mr. Ayala, is that correct?
No.
And then there was.
No.
And thank you, Chief, for being here so late into the evening.
Thank you. Bye, Karen.
This is intimidating or anything, so just gonna get right into it. So, um, today, tonight, I'm presenting the quarterly financial report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, or quarter two. Uh, we're currently in the process of quote, closing quarter three. Um, this table of contents. So right into the revenues for the totals for fiscal year by comparison. So total revenue collected through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, or quarter two, for FY twenty-four, were twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, no, twenty-three million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. Revenues collected through the same time period last fiscal year were twenty-five million, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-four cents. That's a total of six point nine percent less, uh, than collected during the same time period last fiscal year. There's a variance of, uh, one million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, uh, one hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, there's, um, reasons for that, and I'll get into the, um, upcoming slides, but there's also the MS CBA reimbursement, we're no longer receiving, uh, the amount of four hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. There's also, um, other, other funds, um, used free cash, transfers to, uh, from enterprise funds, transfers to the auto, um, artificial turf fund, for a total of seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and six cents. Um, additionally, I want to mention, as an FYI, FY twenty-three, the real estate abatement, um, at the end of FY twenty-three, was one million, three hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-one cents. So there's an offset there, which is pretty close. Uh, there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar gap, but, uh, you can see where the trend is going. Uh, with that being said, uh, for the first two quarters of the fiscal year, the preliminary billing rate is based on the prior year tax rate. So for FY twenty-three, the preliminary tax rate was seven dol, seventeen dollars and nineteen cents, which was the FY twenty-two actual. Uh, for FY twenty-four, the preliminary tax rate was fourteen dollars and sixty-two cents, which is based on FY twenty-three actual. The total estimated tax levy based on the prior year tax rate, uh, net of overlay was thirty-one million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Oops, sorry, all right, skip the slide here. Um, due December thirty-first, total received, uh, was fourteen million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, uh, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, compared to quarter two totals for FY twenty-three. Uh, FY twenty-three, uh, quarter two, property taxes, uh, collected was eighteen million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, um, sorry, the personal property tax, sorry, um, collected was eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents higher than the quarter through, quarter two of last year. I need to slow down. So the real estate taxes, uh, were two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents lower than FY, uh, twenty-three, during, uh, quarter two. Uh, total local receipts collected were forty-four point oh four percent of annual estimates, or one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, that's twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents less than collected during the same period, uh, last year. Uh, and there's a table with the summary. Um, again, local receipts continued, compared to, uh, quarter total, quarter two totals from FY twenty-three, uh, the following categories, uh, are below prior year totals for FY twenty-four. Um, Department of Revenue for the schools, thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Licenses and permits, fifty-eight thousand, uh, ninety-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Motor vehicle excise tax, sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Now, um, there's also a note, typically, the motor vehicle excise tax revenue is collected at the end of, um, and within the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. That's when most of the revenue is collected. Uh, special assessments, uh, four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Penalties and interest, eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, the miscellaneous non-recurring, current, um, revenue, which has, for example, supplemental tax for new constructions, uh, Medicare records for mass rehab, sale of title equipment, net metering credits for solar, and there's other miscellaneous revenue, um, that was eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents, um, lower when compared to last year. Um, the next slide is the state aid. Um, state aid collected were forty-eight point two eight percent of annual estimates, or five million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. Um, this is eighty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents less, less than FY twenty-three during the same period last year. And then there's the summary chart for you to review. Um, I also want to note, um, the forty yes funds, it's not, it's not in here, but it's not typically collected in quarter two. Usually that comes within the last two months of the last fiscal year. So that's three hundred and forty-two thousand, um, was collected during the, um, last May, that should come within last, uh, May or June, hopefully.
Will not come.
Will not.
Not this year.
All right, so any questions before I move on to expenditures?
Yes.
Yeah, I went pretty quick.
So, do we have any, I mean, everything is lower except for what? There was, personal property tax was higher. So any indications why everything is, everything is off considerably from last year, Q two?
Um, there's the motor vehicle excise tax, which is typically collected later on. Um, I don't really know what happened during the last year's quarter, quarter two. I've been here a few months. Uh, could be, uh, I really don't have an answer as to why.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
I mean, even the motor, even the motor vehicle excise tax, given your note, it it's saying that, okay, most of it's gonna be collected in Q four, but what we're comparing is up to Q two of FY twenty-three and up to Q two of FY twenty-four. So that wouldn't even necessarily matter at that point, right? Because it's, I mean, what are we talking about, like, close to, I I'm just ballparking it, close to four hundred thousand dollars less?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was my only question.
He was? No. Move on to the expenditures. Uh, total expenditures due December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, uh, FY twenty-four, uh, quarter two, were twenty-one million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, or forty-four, forty-five point five, forty-five point fifty-five percent of the total budget. Expenditures, through the same period last fiscal year, were twenty-two million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents, or four per, four percent less than expense during the same time.
Oh, well, that's a good thing. All right, at least we offset it.
Yeah, so there's a trend there. It's, it's on both ends.
I'm wondering, you said around four hundred thousand?
That's what I, ballpark, that's what.
For revenue?
Yeah.
Um, that might be attributed to the MSBA reimbursement that we receive for revenue that's.
Ah, okay.
Offset on, yeah, that went away.
But that doesn't come, I just added up all the deficits that he said, so they were all from all different categories.
Right.
So, but the fact that we're spending less is good, so.
So expenditures continued.
If I may interrupt, the expenditures, uh, that you're identifying as being less, uh, as you, are these actuals or are these encumbered?
These are actuals. There are no encumbrances within the, within the numbers. So, um, within the FY twenty-four, next slide, um, you'll notice the retiring, retiring of all debt, um, which attributes to, excuse me, um, a total of fourteen percent less than, less than last year. Uh, as we move on, further down, you notice the, um, group health insurance, uh, the budget for FY twenty-four was much higher, but we had, um, vacancies, which will have an offset, and, um, will have an overage in the healthcare line, we anticipate anyway, uh, for FY twenty-four. So we may need to offset, tap into that overage for other line items as we move closer to the end of the fiscal year.
Is there a percent?
Um, let's see, total general government spending was fifty-eight point thirty-two percent, and compared to last year, uh, which is seventeen thousand dollars less than last year, or two percent, um, difference. Um, police was fifty-two point, sixty-two percent spent of their total budget, and, which was, uh, ten percent more than last year, or ninety-six thousand dollars, ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, moving on to fire, total percent of the budget spent, fifty-six point seventy-six percent, um, which was five percent less than last year, or thirty-eight thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. Uh, radio watch, sixteen percent, sixteen point eight percent, or ten thousand, um, which last year was four, uh, which is ten thousand, thirty-five dollars, three, sorry, ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents more than last year, or four percent. So total protection, um, which includes fire, police, uh, total spent through the fiscal, first quarter, uh, first two quarters fiscal year, was fifty-one, uh, point nine seven percent, or three percent more than last year, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Total DPW, you notice, um, general highway, um, that's, we were just talking about the pavement management, um, of that total highway, uh, the general highway expense line, there was one hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents, um, part of the pavement management plan, spent out of that. So total DPW was sixty-one point thirty-six percent, and compared to last year, it's sixteen percent more, or one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. All right, uh, facilities, totals, percent spent, sixty-six thousand, uh, sixty, sorry, sixty-six point nine four percent, which was, uh, twenty-three percent, uh, less than last year, or ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. Total school department, uh, fifty-nine point four six percent of their budget has been spent, um, compared to last year, it's actually four percent more, four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventeen cents. There was a two and a half percent increase in the total school budget on their operating line, which is that first line, um, number seventy-nine, school department. And then, uh, library, we have sixty point three percent of their budget spent, uh, compared to last year, it's eleven percent more, or twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. So total omnibus budget, this total operating budget, uh, total actuals, was seventeen million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, which is fifty-nine point oh one percent of the budget compared to last year during the same time period. It's, uh, three percent more, or four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and six cents. And then the last slide here, we have, um, other line items, the state assessments, we have fifty-eight point thirty-four percent, uh, compared to last year, six percent less, uh, to. fifty-eight point thirty-four percent compared to last year, six percent less, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. Tax title, thirty percent less than last year, or three thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Wisconsin regional retirement was two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars more, or fourteen percent. There were no prior expenses paid to quarter two. Transfer to trust was seven hundred seventeen dollars, fifty, seventy, seven hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Compared to last year, it's twelve percent less, or ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. And then there's special revenue, there was zero spent. And there was transfer to capital, which were, was one million, four hundred nine, sorry, one million, forty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and seven cents, which was fifty-eight percent less than last year, or one million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven, one dollars and thirty-two cents, which I believe there were less capital projects this fiscal year. Grand total spent was twenty-one million, seven hundred forty-three thousand, sixty-eight thousand, eighty-five cents. That's including the omnibus, which was fifty-four point forty-five percent of the budget, which is actually overall four percent less than last year, which, four percent less than last year, or ninety, nine hundred one thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and seven cents.
Do we have any questions?
One question. Total health and sanitation, it looks like we prepaid or paid much earlier this year than the show board of health and the show of nursing, which we didn't pay at this point last year. Is it that they changed their billing cycle?
I think that was when their bills came in last year.
Okay. Because that's the only one that looks totally out of whack from everything else. Two hundred and sixty-nine percent difference, so. Anything that raises any flags to you? I realize this is your first time through this, so it may be a premature question, but I'm gonna ask.
No, the only question I have is the timing of the payments. Could be earlier, could be later, depending on the activity. I have been here through quarter two, so I don't know the actual activity that happened during the time period. That's my only.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I also was gonna ask if anything jumped out at you as concerning, but that has been asked.
I'm gonna have to, you can go first sometimes.
No, that's okay.
We don't do this all the time.
It's fine.
Thanks for walking us through it. I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What did I do?
Good. Call me, I can give you some pointers, just to make it easier on you.
I will.
Like, you don't have to talk about the cents, like, you can round, you can round things up. The numbers are there, and so just round things up to make them easier to say.
Okay.
It's the counting in them.
I know, I know.
Just the highlights.
Thank you.
Thank you, Azzy.
All right. I always know it's nerve-wracking when you have a, you know, new role in a public presentation and.
Oh, sure.
First time.
It definitely takes a while to get used to, because people think I, naturally was a, was born a good speaker, and it definitely was a lot of work over a lot of years. All right. So, let's see. Next on our agenda, we have an update from AgCom. So we, and I'm not sure if we're gonna receive an update tonight, I see that Mr. Allison is here with us. So last week, we, Mr. Allison posted a meeting for the Agricultural Commission for last Thursday, and my intent was to go there, Mr. Allison and I spoke, I was gonna go and try to understand some concerns and, and, so the meeting was posted, everyone from the commission was emailed when it was posted, the chair sent everyone at the same time, around the same time, a text reminder that the meeting would be posted. When Mr. Allison and I showed up at the, at the Ritter Building, Mr. Allison was there, we sat in the car, no one showed up. And so several minutes after the posted meeting time, we both left. So again, for this evening, we sent a communication out to the entire membership of the Agricultural Commission to request their attendance. And again, just to confirm with the town manager, we heard from the chair, is that correct?
Annie, I think only heard from one other member.
Okay. And we did hear that one member is unable to attend. So I don't know how much of a conversation we're gonna be able to have tonight. I think that, you know, there seems to be some, there seems to be some growing pains on the Agricultural Commission. You know, that's, without them being here, that's probably as much as I want to say publicly, but there seems to be some growing pains. Several members presented, several members presented frustrations, we asked for them to, I asked for them to sort it out within their meeting, that no one came to, or to meet with us, that no one's here at. The chair, of course, was here last week, or at our last meeting, he was at the AgCom meeting, and he's again tonight. He gave us an update last week. I don't know, Mr. Allison, if this is an appropriate time to address anything else, or if it makes sense for you to continue to attempt to reach out to your members and to try to reschedule a meeting with them. I don't know if you can, there we go. There we go.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure, the, it's been two meetings that we haven't had anybody show up to. We don't have an application for the farmer's market, there's concern has been expressed for that not happening, and as well, I share that concern. It's a group thing. If we don't meet, we can't, we can't do anything. So I, I'm, it hasn't been made very clear here why we've been requested, and it hasn't been at my request, so I, as you said, Mr. Chair, I'm not quite sure what we can accomplish here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can accomplish anything here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. This is a board that we appoint, that is not, members have not attended now two meetings, and they're not responding to communications from our office.
So at a certain point, I have a lot to say on this, even though I have no idea what's going on, but I guess I'm just curious, I won't say it. What can we do if people just don't show up? Are we able to remove people from the boards at this point?
Yeah, that's an extreme option, though, but yes, we can choose to not reappoint. I mean, I think that, you know, I, I think it's appropriate that, you know, clearly, some, some members have reached out to the office, they've contacted me individually, they've maybe contacted other members of the board. The feedback is that they need to meet, they need to meet, they have to talk about whatever concerns they have and just, and work through them, that our role here is, you know, the intent tonight was certainly not to have an airing of grievances, but to get a better understanding of, you know, what can we do to be, I sent them a list of questions, what can we do to be helpful? You know, generally, you know, what's the plan for the farmer's market this year? And the answer right now is that there's no plan for a farmer's market this year. Understanding why, they need to meet to designate people, they haven't been able to meet to designate market manager, I think it's called, they haven't met to be able to designate the market managers for the, so I don't fully understand the details. Again, I mean, you know, we've, I've communicated directly with the chair and with a couple of members of the commission. So I, my intent tonight was to get an update from them on what's going with the farmer's market, anything we can do to be helpful, and then whatever organizational things that they have, that would be handled at their meeting in terms of any personnel, that doesn't need to be aired with us. In my opinion, I think that they need to, in the first instance, try to resolve whatever concerns they have, or members may feel or may think that they should attempt to resolve that amongst each other first.
Yeah, I hear you, and I completely agree, but, you know, it is concerning that a board can't function right now, if people aren't showing up and they're not able to deal with those differences or conflict, you know? So, I don't know.
Or it's not, I mean, also, we don't know availability, I mean, I don't know if people generally read their town emails, I mean, there's a lot of other, you know what I mean? Like, there's.
Yeah.
So we just don't have a clear picture on what the issue is, other than they're not meeting.
Do they meet monthly?
Yes.
So.
Is this like every third or something, Thursday of the month?
So they met, they've missed two in a row, if I?
They missed April, they missed March, and several members left in February.
But they were there to begin with.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so they weren't able to have one-sixth of their meetings already.
Correct.
If they missed this, next coming month, it'll be one-quarter of their meetings.
Correct.
If my elementary school math is correct.
Yep, you're right.
So it is our role to make sure that commissions that are duly established by the town meeting are functioning and doing their roles. So barring anybody not telling us why they're not showing up, we need to actively try to figure that out, but in the end, it's our responsibility to make sure we have a functioning agricultural commission.
Yeah.
And anything is, nothing is off the table, as far as I'm concerned, to get it to be a functioning commission.
Yep.
So I don't want to, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, I certainly don't want to have a public airing of grievances, but if there are behind-the-scenes grievances, they should reach out to you, or the town manager, or the rest of the board, and tell people privately what needs to happen. But at the end of the day, I think Mr. Nizolo was correct, that we need a functioning board, and it's alarming that we don't have that, and now, you know, one of the, among the many things they do is, the most publicly visible one is the farmer's market, and if that's not something that's going to happen, because they can't have forms and applications put together, that's not a good outward-facing perspective of the commission and the town.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna add to this, you can't just, like, abdicate your responsibilities, you're either, if you're serving on the board, then you need to show up and figure out, I don't even, I have no idea what's going on either, I have zero idea. I, but you just, you just can't not function. You know, you need to show up and work out whatever differences you have. If you feel like you can't do that, then you resign, but it's a state of limbo right now. We've got people that aren't resigning and not showing up either, so that can't go on in perpetuity. I mean, so, you know, at some point, I think we are gonna have to reach the remedy that Mr. Nizolo has suggested, maybe, maybe we're not there quite yet, but Mr. Alonso makes the point. We gotta, sorry, we have to functioning commissions and, and boards, he just, so I have no idea what the issue is, but if somebody wants to call me, I'm, you know, I'm, I'll listen, but I, something has to happen. Can't just hang back and say, hey, I'm just not gonna show up anymore, and I'm gonna go radio silent, you know?
I agree.
So.
So I did bring it up, but I want to say that it's not something that I want us to do. If it gets to that point, you know, then of course, you know, we will have to consider it, but again, I have no idea what's going on, but people disagree, and conflict isn't necessarily a bad thing. So if you have disagreements, and there are things that are truly bothering you, voice those concerns. Do it as a board, and if you still can't figure it out, then, you know, do it publicly, do it here, you know, I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with that. Again, having absolutely no visibility into what's going on. And if you can't do that, resign. You know, and I don't mean to, like, sound, you know, callous or, you know, whatever, resign and protest, put it all out there, like, just say what you have to say, you know, air your grievances, just not showing up, just, it's not a good situation, so.
I'm not a fan of resignation protest, but I'm.
Neither am I, but.
And I think that the members on the, on this commission in particular, you know, represent the farming community, so this is not, this is one of those groups of people that are hard to replace.
Yeah.
That if you lose the farmers for being on the agricultural commission, you know, who replaces them, that, you know?
Again, I have, I have no idea what's going on, but it seems like, you know, there are a couple options here.
Yep.
Figure out what you need to do so that you can show up and work as a board, or step aside.
All right.
How many people are on that?
The top of my head, I don't recall.
Five, I believe.
Five?
They have a couple alternates.
Right.
And just for clarity, when you say in February, a couple of people left, do you mean left the meeting that was happening in February, or just left the commission?
Left the meeting.
Left the meeting?
They lost their quorum in the, in the middle of the meeting.
Five regular, two associates.
All right. Let's go to interviews, appointments, and reappointments, resignations, so we have two for the town manager, for facilities custodian, well, more than two, beach director, and seasonal lifeguard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm asking the board to ratify first appointment for the facilities custodian, Alan Smith. Alan began his career as a self-employed carpenter for eight years, and then he moved on to become a maintenance mechanic with Digital Corporation. After Digital, he worked in HVAC for different companies for the last twenty-five years. He brings with him a skill set in carpentry, light plumbing and electrical, small engine repair, grounds maintenance, snow removal, general building maintenance, and years of installation of HVAC systems. Alan attended the HVAC program at the Peterson Trade School. His references described him as very reliable, having a strong work ethic, and he will be an asset to the town. So I'm asking the board to ratify his appointment tonight.
Any comments or questions to the town manager, and if not, is there a motion?
Move that we ratify the appointment of the facilities custodian, Alan Smith, as presented by the town manager.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right. As many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, congratulations to Alan and back to the town manager.
Okay. These next three are easy, they're all returning staff, Liz Simeone as for the beach director position, and Mason Bowser and Paige Gangler.
All right.
For lifeguards.
Move that we ratify the town manager's appointment, the beach director, Elizabeth Simeone, and the seasonal lifeguards, Mason Bowser and Paige Gangler.
Second.
Any additional discussion? I heard that second from Mr. Franco. Any additional discussion?
It's because he's closer.
That's, that's probably why. Additional discussion? As many as are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, congratulations to Liz, to Mason, and to Paige. No town manager report today?
There is.
Oh. Did I miss that? Try?
Yes.
Oh, look at that.
Go ahead. Okay. For meetings, events, and other announcements, the annual town meeting is Saturday, May fourth, at nine AM at the middle school, high school auditorium. The annual town election is Saturday, May eighteenth, seven AM to five PM at the D.C. Passios Building. The yard waste days have resumed, they're every Saturday from, until May eighteenth, eight AM until four PM at twenty-seven Youngs Road, which is behind the Trittown buildings. The Lunenburg Cub Scouts will be hosting their annual plant sale on May eleventh, eight forty-five AM until three PM on the Ritter Building Memorial Lawn. For board committee commission vacancies, we have the following positions. One vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy on the Council on Aging, two associate vacancies on Green Communities Committee, one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee, and one vacancy on the Personnel Committee. Anyone interested in any of these positions, they can find the volunteer applications on the town website, complete them, and return them to the select board's office. If you have any questions on the rules and responsibilities, you can call the office at nine seven eight, five eight two, four one three zero, extension one four four. For employment opportunities, we have the following positions, a land use director position for forty hours a week, planning board administrative assistant for thirty-six hours a week, seasonal cemetery laborers, and seasonal lifeguard positions. Information on each of these positions can be found on the website under job opportunities and, and how to apply.
The two seasonal lifeguards we just made, does that take that off, or do we still need more?
No, they still would need more positions, and we're waiting to see if some additional ones would return from last year. An update on the Flat Hill drainage overall project, per the last select board meeting, the town is working with McCarty. meeting, the town is working with McCarty Engineering on work to be done to the detention basin, and their surveyors were on-site yesterday, um, working on that survey for the basin. Funding for Flat Hill Culvert Project, different part of Flat Hill, after speaking with Mass DOT about the Flat Hill Culvert Project and possible additional state funding for that project, we submitted a letter requesting an additional $100,000 in funding, which we were notified last week that we will be receiving. We currently have $500,000 from a small bridge grant, and remaining $375,781 in a town appropriation. The project was put out to bid in March, and the lowest response of responsible bidder came in at $830,230, so this additional $100,000 from Mass DOT will help pay for the higher-than-estimated construction costs, including any contingency funding, project oversight from our engineering firm, utility relocation, and imminent domain expenses. So that was good news.
Excellent.
They received another $100,000 for that project. Rural roads funding, that the DPW director talked tonight about, just a little bit more about what that is, that's, uh, was a, also a surprise, pleasant surprise, that we received, although not significant, it is, does add to our Chapter 90 total. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation announced that 25 million in supplemental funding included in a fiscal '24 transportation bond bill is now available to municipalities for road and bridge repairing construction. By statute, the rural roadway funding program is to be distributed to all communities through a formula that favors rural communities, with apportionments based 20% on road miles, 20% on population, and 60% on whether a community is considered rural. For this program, rural communities are defined as having a population of less than 10,000 and a population density of fewer than 500 people per square mile. On April 9th, Mass DOT said apportionments have been added to each city and town's Chapter 90 account, and the funding must be spent according to Chapter 90 rules and procedures, with no spending deadline. Lunenburg's apportionment is $21,979. An update on requests for proposals, an invitation for bids, an invitation for bids for landscaping at town facilities and parks is due on June 11th, and we are rebidding the removal of solid waste at the Woodruff property, which is 104 Fairview Road, bids are due on June 12th. We received no bids the last time we put that out to bid.
Is all this one that's out for so long, for weeks?
Yes, uh, to give enough notice. An update on TCP and relocating the public access studio. On Friday, April 12th, there was another major leak into the public access studio at the T.C. Passios Building. Due to the ongoing leaks in that area and potential damage to their equipment, the facilities director and I agreed we would move them to the back wing of the building, where there have not been any leaks. The facilities director is handling getting the necessary electricity, cabling, and sealing the floors done before moving the studio, which will occur after town meeting. And just a, uh, further note on that building, um, speaking weekly with the facilities director about that building, and the consistent and more frequent issues that are occurring at that building, um, you're gonna hear more and more about the expenses that we're having to incur for that building, and, uh, what we need to plan to do, um, is becoming more and more.
Obvious.
Yeah, obvious, and, um, an immediate need. The senior means tested property tax exemption, good news, Representative Scarsdale notified us at the end of last week that the Senate engrossed House Bill 3911, and, which is the home rule petition for the means tested, um, senior citizen property tax exemption, and it made it to the governor's desk yesterday, so we're just waiting for final sign-off by the governor. Employee highlights, I wanted to give a shout-out to our IT network administrator, Dan Nadareski, for always being so responsive to all of our employees' IT troubleshooting needs, and Dan has also been spearheading all the efforts with getting ready for town meeting, and working with the, um, what we need for IT, what, working with public access, working with the town clerk, and the vendor that we use for the voting, um, equipment for that, and with myself, and making sure that we're gonna be well-prepared for town meeting. To give a little bit of an update on that, um, we've started communicating, um, a group of us that are involved, meaning the town moderator, and the public access, uh, manager, and, um, IT staff, the school, everyone who wouldn't have immediate, uh, knowledge of what's needed to get, um, prepared for overflow rooms, so we are prepping to have the gym and the caf cafeteria both equipped for overflow, so the capacity in the auditorium is about 600 people, we'll fill that to capacity first before doing overflow in the other two rooms. We have 600, uh, remote clickers that are town-owned, those will be distributed first for the auditorium, and then 200 we're borrowing from the water district, there's the same equipment as us, um, our vendor was out today testing out all the, um, clickers and making sure everything works properly, 'cause we're gonna need, um, also, um, receptacles to make sure that the, um, clickers work remotely from different locations. I also wanted to thank everyone who participated in the Earth Day events that were put on, was put on by the Park Commission and Conservation Commission, which included our police chief and staff from his department, including Sergeant Zarate, Officer Monroe, Officer Artega, Kennedy Jackson, and Amanda Moore, and Officer La Chance also provided traffic assistance for all of those events as well, so, thank you to all.
All right, thank you for the town manager's report.
You're welcome.
Thank you for pulling it together after coming off of vacation, uh, so quickly, any questions to the town manager?
No questions, but I wanna echo her shouting out of Dan Nadareski, I've dealt with Dan for many years in many different capacities, and he is excellent to work with, uh, really knows his stuff, always responsive, always professional, and he really is intent on doing an excellent job all the time, so I, I couldn't.
He is.
I couldn't agree more.
All right. So next on our agenda, we have the, uh, draft turnover policy, so, uh, hopefully all members have had the opportunity to review this, so let's just go ahead and pull it up, it's called the Draft Revenue Turnover Policy in our Google Drive. Any comments to the town manager related to this policy, any suggested corrections, changes?
At the risk of, I mean, this is probably obvious, but, does the town manager have any suggestions, or is, are you fine?
This is what I'm recommending, I've worked with.
It is your recommendation.
Yes, it's my recommendation.
Again, for people coming in the middle, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I read it through, and I don't, I mean, I, I'm not in tune with all the internal finance collections, and if anybody is, certainly, uh, the town manager, has, has the finance director reviewed this too?
I worked with the finance director and the treasurer collector to draft this policy.
Okay, so, if they're just fine with them, and until such time as the audits change, from the annual audits, from, from our auditing company, I trust the finance team of the town, they have earned it.
Same, I don't have any questions or comments.
As compelling as it was to read, I'm comfortable with what, um, what has been done, so.
I think there's a couple minor things I can bring up to the town manager, I noted them in the, in a couple different sections, um, uh, and they're just language things, I was not intending on us voting on this tonight, so, uh, I'll offer a couple reasons why. Uh, the first is, I don't think that turnover policy to the public gives a reasonable idea of what we're actually talking about, uh, and that's my error, for not being more detailed before we posted the agenda, when I think turnover, I think the average person at home who looks at the agenda with things that we're talking about, staff coming and going, I think the next thought would be equipment, I don't think that there's a natural process that people would automatically assume that we're talking about money and receipts and revenue, so I, I do think that we would need to be a little clearer, um, and, and this is on me, 'cause again, you know, the town manager was, had already sent me the agenda before she went on vacation, I had that thought, and I didn't make the correction on the agenda, on the draft agenda before posting, which I would've added additional language, so I'm a little concerned about, did we give the public enough information about it, but the other part of it is, um, I do, my opinion is, because there's reference to departments, um, and, and a lot of these are staff, you know, staff-driven, uh, but there is some implication when it comes to the library, that you have library trustees, that, that may want to review this and weigh on it, when it comes to the cemetery, with their different, um, with their different funds, they, they may wanna weigh on it, and the parks may wanna weigh on it, I don't expect that there's, this is, this isn't an internal process, and I don't expect that there's going to be any substant, substantial feedback given, but I would also suspect that those commissions would be in the best position to identify some unintended effect of what is being codified by, you know, and to me, this is a lot of normal practices already, it's just formalizing them, so I, I, I think that they may be in the best position to formalize, so, what I would recommend is that we repost, um, that we, um, that we repost to pass this somewhere around mid-May, to give boards, and, uh, 'cause not everyone meets next week, give everyone a couple weeks, uh, and if there's no impact in terms of, it sounds like this process already occurs, that we then implement it, uh, in mid-May, the week before the election, the meeting before the election, but I'm.
Can I just, yeah?
Of course, I'm asking for your thoughts on this one.
I understan, turnover may mean different things to different people, it's in my vernacular, so it's, it's a term that I'm familiar with, um, this is the second time it's been on the agenda, 'cause we did discuss it once, and it was asked to be reviewed until tonight.
Correct.
The reason, the whole impetus this, we have a lot of staff turnover this year, it's good to have things in writing, without having something written that's policy, um, it's based on verbal communication of what the process and procedure is. This is to safeguard the town's funds that are coming in, it's not about spending these funds, it's how they're received and turned over to the treasurer for safeguarding, so it protects the town, it protects the employees, protects the process to make sure they're handling funds they're receiving, um, safely, and limiting the liability of the town and those assets. There's, this is being handled by staff, not by, there's no time that a trustee or a cemetery commission should be accepting funds, um, it would be going through the department and being turned over to the treasurer collector.
Yep, no, Heather, I think, I don't disagree with you on the necessity of it, I don't disagree with the policy, I think that, in my view, you know, wise policymaking is incorporating, um, all people who could potentially have an opinion or be impacted, seeking their opinions or comments, even if for the most part, we expect that there won't be any, um, and, you know, mid-May is two and a half, three weeks away, so it's three, three meetings. For me, and I think that, you know, I, I'm aware that there have been, um, some concerns, specifically from the cemetery department, about some funds, and I know that they, you know, and, and I believe, and I didn't review this with them, or give it to them, um, but I think it, I would expect that they're going to have an opinion about it, uh, given that, you know, there were some, some challenges, and then working with the library, um, I know that they like to be in the loop before things are implemented that affect their staff, so I don't, I don't see harm in, in, in you as town manager advising your staff that this is the draft policy that you guys are, that we're considering to implement or approve, and to practice it, I mean, aren't you guys already, is, aren't, is it correct to believe that staff are currently implementing what's already written?
There's nothing in writing.
It's just not in writing, it's just verbal communication.
Right, but, yeah, there's a danger to that.
There is.
So, um, regarding the cemetery, what you're referring to, that's about expenditure of those accounts, that's not about receipt of, of funds.
I, I would, it's, expect that, and I don't know where it's in here, that, that there may be, um, there may be some questions about how information's provided related to revenue, and when we talk about scope, we also, I mean, to be clear, we are noting the school department fully in this, um, you know, it specifically says, "All departments, boards, and commissions, uh, are involved in the collection and receipt of town funds," uh, so, I mean, I think that there is an implication to boards and commissions, that I think in wise policymaking, it would be good for us to just send a copy, uh, to our board members, and perhaps the 13th, or whatever date I have in mind is too late, perhaps the better one is the 7th, uh, but I think there needs to be a fair opportunity for the public and other boards and commissions to even know what we're talking about, and then comment on it, and when someone reached out to me and said, "With the turnover policy," I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about, 'cause I, I didn't remember that it was called a turnover policy, um, so, I, I think it's, so, given that I was in the meeting two weeks ago, and I forgot the name, and I work on the agendas, I think it's reasonable that a member of the public wouldn't understand what we're talking about.
Well, I think the last time anybody, of the member of the public gave any input on a policy, I, I, I can't even recall where that has ever happened, so I'm not worried about the public, now, the, the goal about the staff and, and people under other boards, I, I certainly, certainly can understand that, uh, I guess my only comment would be, since we had this two weeks ago, it would've been great to bring that up then, so we could've distributed it then, and, 'cause now it just looks like we're just delaying it for some reason, I mean, I, I, again, I'm not attributing any ill intentions, but it just seems like we're delaying it for delaying it, I mean, the town manager brings up a good point, it's the second time it's been, the first time was, oh, you didn't have it, okay, so yeah, everybody wanted to read it, but we should've known, okay, well, this should be distributed accordingly, uh.
Yeah, I don't recall if it was even on the agenda, but maybe I'm, I'm wrong on that one.
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda.
Um, did you have?
Yep.
No, I, I don't feel strongly, honestly, either way.
Um, well, I, I, you, you have me part of the way toward not taking the vote, and that, and it's actually kind of for the op, not the opposite concern, but the other concern that you brought up is that, you know, there's been a little uptick in, it, there's a hair trigger for open meeting law call-outs, um, uh, and I do think that somebody could seize upon this, being inadequate notice on this thing, and, and I just, you know, we don't need that problem, so, um, is, I mean, like, I know you wanna get this implemented, is there a major problem delaying it for a week?
No.
So, I mean, I can definitely go along with delaying it for a week, mostly because of the posting issue.
I, I will say, if I may, Mr. Chair, to the, to the point of posting, the town manager and the fi, uh, the real question is, if you ask people in, in that loop, what is the policy called anywhere else, if the answer to that is, it's called a turnover policy, then that's what it's called, then, we're not making up a word, so the fact that the public may not know what that is, if it's a term that's used within, within the departments, you know, and it's a regular term from municipality to municipality, you know, there are lots of things like that, I mean, there are lots of things like that that happen, people hear, you know, you know, all acronyms all the time, and different words mean different things and different, you know, careers, so, I don't think anybody would have a legitimate reason, we're not, the, the, the agenda is to tell you what you're talking about, not to necessarily explain what it is, yeah, there is some kind of, there is some responsibility from the public, if you're reading it, to know what that is, we, we haven't hidden what the policy is, so I don't think we're in any jeopardy of the, oh, meanwhile, now, to extend it to next week, we, we get one good thing, is that we got a five-member board, and then, you know, Ms. MK can weigh on it too, so I, I'm for delaying it for a week for that, but not beyond a week, I mean, and it's a policy, and it's a policy that lays with us, so committees of other elected bodies and appointed bodies have objection, they can bring it to us, and we can certainly amend it, but I think this town manager makes a good safeguard, uh, argument, that it would be good to have something in place, and if we have to tweak it, even if it's a month after we adopt it, at least it's in place. And if we have to tweak it, even if it's a month after we adopt it, at least it's in place. And anything we do is going to be a tweak. It's not going to be a wholesale rewriting. So I'm fine with delaying it for a week, but not like three weeks.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that most boards are going to have time to respond to it in a week because that's what I'm, you know, that's what I think is necessary. I mean, I think that, you know, we had, if I go back in time here, I mean, I presented some environmental policies in around October of 2022 and have provided the town manager with about a year and a half of time for staff to respond and haven't seen anything back. So.
Those are all, all their comments? They're in the drive?
I haven't seen them then.
They're in the.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
And so, but I haven't seen those comments. I, what my point is, if we give staff opportunity to give feedback, I did see them from some boards and commissions and I'm not saying the town manager didn't do anything. I know that she sent them out to get feedback back. I just didn't see the response. But if I think if we as practice try to be thorough and try to go through the process of making sure that all voices are heard, I mean, as I, I think it's equally important for other boards and commissions, especially if we write policies, no matter what it is, that it's to me, especially something that, that makes reference to boards and commissions and the school department, that we give a fair opportunity for them to meet, review and pass if there's nothing to, to pass on. Uh, and then the other point being the public issue, I, I hear you, Mr. Alonso. I think it's reasonable that if staff notice about, but I don't translate open meeting law to be, does staff understand agenda? I translate it to be, does the general public understand what's being discussed reasonably? And, and I think if I would have included the word revenue turnover policy, which is what's actually written on the policy, I think my concern would be resolved. Cause I think people could Google what is revenue turnover policy and they would be fully informed. But I think the absence of that critical word here, I, I don't think the public was reasonably informed and that was my mistake.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And I'm fine with delaying it for a week and that, that can be remedied in the next agenda, I guess.
So is the rest of the board in favor? I mean, I want mid-May, but is the rest of the board in favor of next week? My pen's falling apart.
Yeah.
All right. So let's add this to next week. And if we can just distribute it in case anyone wants to show up next week, that'd be helpful.
Certainly.
All right. All right. My pen just fell apart.
Well, just, I was gonna say, I felt like you had put it together something.
The spring of your pen. No, I always like mess with the cap and I, I somehow put the cap on, I got, the whole top fell off with it. So I couldn't.
I remember being chair once and I had one of those clickers and I clicked it and eventually it's, my hand slipped off and the whole clicker part like.
All right. Uh, any discussion on fiscal year 24 budget, 25 budget, capital plan, 10-year annual town meeting warrant?
Consent calendar is in, draft is in the Google Drive.
Thank you. So for the consent calendar, you want me to walk through this or would you like to?
I can. Um, so I've put together, uh, so consent calendar for the public is a grouping of articles that are non-controversial to be voted as a block. Every motion is read all in one and at each article, after it's read, there's an opportunity for a hole to be pulled out of the consent calendar. This starts at the, the beginning of the town meeting. So the articles that I've put on the draft consent calendar, uh, for consideration are article one. And that's dependent on whether we're, there are any regular reports to be heard by any words I asked the chair and didn't believe there were. Um, because municipal building design is not giving a report.
There may be a report, but I don't, I don't think it's going to happen in time.
Okay.
Given, given how lengthy this meeting is potentially going to be, I don't think there's going to be time.
Okay. Um, and there can always be an opportunity if they had a handout, it can be on a table with handouts.
There will likely be a handout.
Article two is the reauthorization of the revolving funds that have already been established. I did not include article three, which is the new revolving fund that's referenced in the bylaw for the wetlands protection account. Article four is the prior year tax, uh, sorry, prior year expense. It's $1,944.55. That's for details that were not paid out for road projects at the end of the fiscal year that came to light. Article 12 is the stabilization fund to transfer 100,000 from free cash into that fund. Article 13 is transfer 250,000 from free cash into the special purpose stabilization fund. Article 14 is the OPEB trust fund, so to transfer 187,061 dollars um, and from, um, town funds and 1,500 from sewer retained earnings to the OPEB trust fund. This is voted every year. Article 16 is to transfer 35,000 from the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund from sewer enterprise retained earnings. Article 17 is the solid waste enterprise budget. And that's, uh, 398,000 from, um, anticipated revenues and 102,000 from the solid waste disposal retained earnings for a total of 500,000 for fiscal 25. Article 18 is the water, um.
Department?
Water enterprise. It's really not a water department. We don't really have a water department. So that's, um, so it's those, um, five to seven accounts that we receive bills from Fitchburg that we have to then bill those customers for. That's 45,000. Article 19 is the public access budget article. And article 20 is the sale of cemetery lots article for $10,000. And article 25 is the water protection supply district, which they voted last night at the planning board to pass over at town meeting. So.
Again, well, at least they didn't have an hour of discussion before we do that again. This is like the third time this has been on here. Wow.
But I think they had substantive, um, changes and things that people brought up. So they decided to table it to the fall to, to vote to pass over it at this town meeting. Are there any questions or anything that anyone thinks is, should not be included? Cause this, once the board decides, it would pass it on to the finance committee to discuss at their meeting on Thursday. So everyone's in agreement.
25 is the article 20, there's only 25 articles, right?
Yes.
Wow. So this, cause then it cuts that in half. Okay.
I mean, if you want to throw the override article.
It's not a contention at all.
Get pulled out.
Thought about saying that too.
I, I will, I will point out, I always, I always get a little bit concerned about the consent calendar with the prior year expense, even at the price it is, because it causes the whole thing to need nine tenths vote. Not that I don't think it's going to get it. I just point that out. And for doing one article alone for nine tenths vote, which would take literally less than four minutes, uh, I was hesitant. Well, I just, I mean, we put it in last year and it passed and, you know, the worst that'll happen is that if we vote the consent calendar down for some reason, it doesn't reach nine ten, then we gotta go through each of the articles, right? So.
Right. And I think it may, that may be diverted anyways by people pulling out the things that, you know, they're gonna vote no on.
Right.
So.
Cause that is the way the consent calendar works, right? If you.
If, if there's a hole to pull.
No, a hole, we know, but if, if you, if we go to vote on it and it fails, it doesn't make every, it doesn't, it just means that we vote on it again or do all those articles fail.
They, we would then re-go through them and vote.
So you'd get a second shot at the apple is the point.
Oh, that was my understanding.
That's, that's what I think too, but it, I just, I don't know that it's written anywhere like that. So it'd be good to know and explain somewhere and for future reference. If, if we're going to hand out a handout, we should say that a no on the consent calendar doesn't mean that the articles are defeated. It means they just get voted on in their order otherwise. So we should make that clear. Never came up until now, because I never thought, we had, we never even had a close vote.
No.
I'd rather not be starting any kind of new trend this year.
Yeah. And that's why we tried to, yeah, make sure there, there's nothing controversial about any of these. Everyone kind of agrees.
That'd be a good head start to that meeting. Halfway down.
All right. So everyone's comfortable with what's being proposed for the consent calendar? No one's pulling anything out?
No.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anything else on that that you wanted to hit?
Um, no.
Um, we don't have any, we do have some minutes. Um, we have minutes from October the 10th. Um, did anyone have the opportunity to provide any feedback?
I read through it earlier.
I was absent for that meeting, so.
Yeah, I read through them earlier. I think that, um, I think that Annie's doing a really good job in how she summarizes, um, the comments, the only feedback, and I didn't give it to her previously and I figured we were going to vote on it. But going forward, it would be helpful if she can put in bold, uh, the motions and the votes. And that's really it. But I thought she did a great job, um, pulling them together and, uh, yeah. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from October 10th.
Second, any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Any abstentions?
Abstained.
All right. The motion passes. All right. Um, warrants, I don't see warrants tonight. Oh, there they go. We should be signing something soon.
There's, there's so many, they needed their own chairs.
Probably good on those three.
Oh, thank you. So first we have, uh, accounts. Let me just look at it. I got it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. So we have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of 361,457 dollars and one cent. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of 836,826 dollars and 99 cents. We have a payroll warrant in the amount of, uh, a little lower today, 900, 9,598 dollars and four cents. Do you have any action items? All right. I will start with two. So the first is to the town manager, um, and it is, it would be helpful going through the presentations tonight. And I made this, I, I made this comment earlier today to myself and I meant to reach out to you. But, um, it would be helpful if we had a standard template for presentations, um, I think with a minimum font size. I think that the presentations we received tonight, I know that, you know, some residents have complained at home that they can't read them. But I think it would be helpful if we figured out what is the minimum font that's readable, um, on most televisions? And, and let's make that the minimum, uh, cause I think a lot of the fine print, um, you know, I, I know that finance reports are not the most interesting reports to people. Um, but I think, you know, using that as an example, um, I think it sometimes is helpful if people at home could follow along because they can read numbers better than they can hear numbers. Um, and then going through the, the, um, plan that was presented by Mr. Bernard, seeing it here, I mean, it was fine. But I just worry that the folks at home can't follow along. So that, that's my only comment. It would be helpful if we had a standard template with some minimum font sizes. And then the second one is not for the town manager, but it's for the board and, uh, to decide if we want to put, we can talk about this to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We had a request coming from the PTO, uh, and the request is for us to do, it's in our Google Drive. And I, uh, and the request is pretty straightforward. It's asking if we will consider creating a, uh, experience prize uh, for, I'll just go ahead and read the note. Uh, so we have a, a, a note from, um, Ms. Gilman. Uh, and it says, you know, to select board members and, and to the town manager, um, Ms. Lemieux, I'm writing in, um, let me just get to the point. In the last few years, the biggest hits for prizes, this is related to PTO. They're having, um, a raffle during cruise night on May the 22nd, uh, which we had previously approved. Uh, and then so their note is in the last few years, the biggest hit for prizes included a ride to school in the fire truck, principal for the day and a tour of the state house. And is it possible the select board could honor a student as select board member of the day or a town manager for the day? Uh, it could be as creative as you'd like and wouldn't have to actually include the whole day. You could present an award to the student at school or have them come to a meeting. Uh, let me know if you'd like to chat about this further. So I figured I would give this to us. It seems like a pretty cool thing. I think that, um, I did have a couple of questions about age limits, like what are the ages for this? And, uh, manager's response was that we could, we could pick that ourselves, that we could say, hey, this prize is good for kids aged, you know, 12 through whatever, we can say it's great for five through 10. So we could put restrictions on age on it ourselves. And then also for us to just discuss, I am not creative. I, I, I am to a point, but this is not my thing. And I don't know, I don't have any idea what kids enjoy. So I'm sitting here looking at Caesar.
Wow.
No, 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 not, not even, no, you know, that didn't come out right. I'm looking at Caesar because in our interactions, I find Caesar to be very creative and, and thoughtful about, about things in that. You know, you might be in a better position, certainly better than I, and I think Mr. Alonso would as well, given the work you do at the Boys and Girls Club. You might have a better idea than I of what would something good look like. Cause to me, I don't think coming to a meeting for two hours is being fun for a kid.
Yeah, I thought that too. Honestly, like, looking at this email, my first impression was, actually, I think like riding to school in a fire truck would be more fun than being like a select board member or town manager for the day. But like, also like compared to, um, well, select board member of the day, I mean, we're volunteers. So like really the only thing that that would entail is coming to a meeting. And I don't know if anyone really would want to spend their Tuesday night with us until like 10:00 or 11:00 PM.
Kids to that, I mean.
You know, town manager for a day, like maybe that could be like a fun thing.
I was like, when do I have time?
I know, I know. Um, it would need to be developed a little more and I don't really know if I'm the right person for that, but.
I know I'm the wrong.
I don't, and honestly, like my honest opinion is that in the last few years, like what you guys have already done are better than like what you're trying to do. Um, but I don't know. I guess fire trucks are more exciting than government, maybe?
Wow, for a kid, you think, you think, like, like Hasbro makes fire truck toys. There's no municipal government set. There's no board game called.
You do genuinely like.
Right, select board. I don't have any ideas. I've, I've thought about this and I'm like, I don't have any ideas at all for what a kid may find.
Well, I like the idea of, of being asked and I, so I'll give it some more thought. I did read it when it came in. But I'll give it some more thought if we could come up with anything. I mean, it's, it really, I mean, it would take, and I don't mean this in any bad way, it would really take a special kind of kid to appreciate or want to do anything municipal government oriented. Like be chair of select board for a day or town manager for a day, you know? I don't even, that, that doesn't even thrill the select board or the town manager. I don't think. So we had to do something a little more exciting.
Yeah. Kid appropriate.
All right. So that gets rid of mine. Mine was going to be Facebook comment screener for a day.
Yours would be, yours would be named that colonial, that colonial founding father. That's what would be yours. Look.
All right. So this is something we can take up on our, our next agenda until we can, hopefully everyone's going to put on their creative juices. I'm not coming with any ideas. I'm just, I thought about this heavily and I just, I even talked about it at home and I couldn't, I couldn't think of anything fun. I don't think I'm a fun person.
The only thing, there is one thing that maybe, I was just thinking off the top of my head. So like, we give people commendations and citations. We could, we could recognize we're the citation, somebody being the citizen of the day or, you know, whatever. We could, we could have some kind of, you know, a formal presentation and we can invite the police and fire here to, you know, their members, because they are very, they really love doing that kind of community thing of the schools. And present them with the award with their family. That would be kind of an interesting idea.
Or do it during the school day, right? Cause I mean, that would probably be the.
I think coming, I mean, I think there's something about coming to a meeting, just, they don't have to stay for the whole meeting, just like be there and, you know.
Yeah. Seven oh five, public comments after this.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we try, we would do that right off the start. Right.
We can come up with an idea for like a fun award like that, that we can do as, you know, any sort of citation that we do. I think that's probably like realistically all that we can actually do. So.
So next week we'll talk about.
To town hall.
That's, I was thinking that. I didn't say.
Yeah, there you go. That's a great idea. See?
Oh.
What was that one?
What was that one?
Like a fake key to town.
Oh.
You know, we can give the key to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought of that, but I don't, I don't know, it's so.
If you can teach her to wind a clock.
Hey, that, that's. See, there you go. That could be something there, right?
You turn a clockwinder, too.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. That'd be good, a tour, a tour of the town hall, including the clock. That would be a cool idea.
I like that.
So I did have something in, in there.
See? Plus, plus, I was going to say even before that comment, that you're selling yourself short, there have been one or two occasions over the last three years when I have found you to be fun.
Especially as these meetings get to like.
And this is why people need to watch the whole meeting.
Stuff happens at the end.
Exactly.
All right. Any other action items this evening? Oh! Any other action items this evening? No. All right, committee reports.
FinCon meets on Thursday. They're going to talk about their finance committee report for a handout to town meeting, because it didn't make the printed report.
Okay.
And then they'll, I, they have some agenda items for the budget, just like we do, for the budget, for the override, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep. Any other?
Planning board met last night. They finally continued the public hearing for two fifty-five Sunny Hill Road. One of the lots is especially problematic for conservation, so it's still being reviewed. They discussed for a while allowing the other lots, I think there's three other lots that they wanted to build on to move forward, they decided not to, so they're going to continue the public hearing again on June tenth. We already discussed the water protection bylaw, won't really get into the discussion, but they're still working with the public, it's still being worked on, so they decided not to have it be voted on at town meeting, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Economic Development Committee will meet six P.M. Thursday at RIR.
All right, library met last week, and I already gave the note about AgCom, and, okay, upcoming meetings. We have April thirtieth, so we're meeting next week, and then we're meeting, we have town meeting coming up on May the fourth, that's Saturday, at the Linnorick Middle School High School auditorium, and overflow, as announced tonight, in the gymnasium and potential, potentially in the gymnasium, and potentially in the cafeteria. And then we are meeting on, we have the seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first, so it looks like we're meeting straight through until the end of the month, end of May. All right.
And you and Mr. Chair are not here the seventh, the fourth and the seventh, is that correct?
I am not here on the fourth or the seventh, Mr. Franco will be chairing on the seventh. Do we have any other absences coming up that we're aware of? All right, public comments. Any public comments this evening from the town manager?
None for me.
All right, any public comments from the public? We're going to start with Mr. Passios, we're, oh, we're going to call anyone in the room. Mr. Passios?
Thank you very much, Dave Passios, fifty-six One Hill Street, speaking as a citizen of the town number, and nothing to do with any of my fire updates or president seats involved with municipal government. I have to put this committee on notice that I'm going to blame you guys if we do not have a farmer's market this summer. There's at least one member of your committee who is very much aware of what the issues are with the AgCom, ten points that need to be vetted of the circumstances of the February meeting, take a look at the agendas for the last two years, that gives you a good picture of something that's been going on or not going on, and a lack of real organization in a very, very locked up. As I said, there's at least one member of your committee that is aware of what the issues are, and the way you guys are dancing around it, it won't be a farmer's market this summer, because it's not going to get resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. And I think you're referring to me, I'm very aware of the concerns of the members of the Agricultural Commission. I think, you know, I don't think it was appropriate for me to mention it in their absence this evening, certainly, I think the approach I've taken is to try to meet with the Agricultural Commission and to invite the membership to come here to meet with us as well. But I am, I'm very aware.
Yeah, the other comment I wanted to make is half the town is very much aware of what the problem is, I can't believe you guys are not. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Yes. Good to see you this evening. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you, too. Hi, my name's John Duffy, I live at six eighty-four Flat Hill Road. And speaking on my help, myself, and not on behalf of the AgCom, just for clarity, I think that I agree that there's been efforts to try to arrange a meeting between AgCom as a quorum and the select board to discuss issues such as a farmer's market and the AgCom in general. From my communications, I can see that on the ninth, there was a select board meeting, and there was no quorum of the AgCom able to be, but because there was not a meeting posted for that day. And we were invited to have invitation for the same topics of tonight as that day, in hopes to meet a quorum for that day. I heard earlier that you'd only heard back from the chair and one other member saying that they were unable to attend, and just like to clarify that, I sent two emails saying that I would be available tonight and request that we could have communication on if there would be a quorum available, and have a meeting for the AgCom posted for this evening, so that AgCom could be here in quorum and meet with the select board, and not just myself as an individual person. So the emails were sent on April ninth and April sixteenth requesting that a quorum to be made for today. I'm sorry that Michael Ray Jeffries, that you came to the meeting last Thursday, and that no one showed up to the meeting. I would like to say that the members of AgCom outside of the chair were not aware that you would be in attendance to have a discussion with the AgCom that day, and also that two members of the AgCom did respond that they would not be able to make that meeting in advance of the meeting, so it should have been known that at least two of the five members of AgCom had declined for the day, so the chances of having a quorum that day were minimal.
I was only aware of Mary Ray being out of town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but our chair was aware that two people had declined, and I feel that should have been passed on to you before you came to the meeting to, to be there, or, or that we could have been, had an agenda with your topic on there, that we would be discussing some things.
I thought it was on the posted agenda, the meeting with the chair of the select board.
I'm not sure. But anyways, my understanding was that we were meeting tonight, but we didn't have a meeting posted for AgCom for today. So I do think we could have a little bit more communication to have a meeting set up with AgCom, whether that's here or at a separate ad hoc meeting. I think that AgCom is willing to meet, but we just need to have clarity on who's going to be where and what is the, the case.
Do you mind if, while you're here, we, I engage with you? Because this is a public comment, so technically, you comment and we don't have to respond. But do you mind if I?
You can speak.
It, it may be helpful if, if the members of the Agricultural Commission can see if there's an opportunity to meet outside of the normal meeting schedule, and, and preferably, you know, sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
And as soon as possible. And I don't know how to get that communication going, I don't know if you have, I think, I was told that you guys have a text thread that you guys are all on with one another, and for the purpose of coordinating meetings, it is acceptable to be able to text one another to say, hey, when's the next available opportunity for people to meet? And for the most part, you know, I'm, aside from select board meetings and given the cycle that we're in, I'm, I'm pretty available. I know, I, you know, we can certainly meet with the full board, I know I wanted to have the opportunity to meet with you guys as well, because I, my thought was that else, most of your meetings are at Twitter, excuse me, most of your meetings are at Twitter, I'm aware that they're not, they're minutes, but they're not always televised, and so there's no real record of any previous meetings, and, and sometimes that in-person forum creates an opportunity for people to speak more frankly.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think it would be helpful if the commission could meet as a commission, and then talk through some of the challenges that are having, and figure out what the next steps are.
Yep, I would agree with that, I think that would be great. I think as previous public comment said, I don't think anyone looks a lot at the AgCom done, because it's been the same for quite some time, so.
So between me, I can reach out certainly to Mr. Allison, I know he's still with us, and to you, but I would encourage that there be that communication, you know, amongst each other, to kind of get that next date down. I know I'm going to be away from roughly the second through the seventh, but it doesn't have to be me, it could be anyone, but I will be back, so I'm away from the second through the seventh of May, but certainly, I know that any member of this board is qualified and capable, you know, to be able to meet with you guys and talk through, I think, I would specifically prefer that Mr. Alonzo or Mr. Franco, given their experience on the board, and experience with challenging municipal kind of dynamics that can exist, that, that, you can certainly pick whoever you want. Mr., Mr. Muzolo, you know, is a, you know, officer in the Army, is a trained leader, he certainly knows how to work with people, but it may be helpful, I know that, you know, I've leaned on Mr. Alonzo a lot for guidance on how to move forward on things, so it may be helpful that if it's not me, it's someone else. But do you think that you guys can work on that? Do you have contact for the other members?
Um, yes. Could it be possible to propose somebody, to propose a time and a date, and we can, AgCom, or maybe two dates, and we can find which one works, that works with the member of the select board?
Are you, do you know if the members have email and access to email or information?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so they are getting the emails? Okay.
I think, I mean, as far as I know, the majority of the members have access to the email, maybe one or two do, but I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Well, I have your number, Jen, so it may be helpful for us to talk and kind of work through a potential date, and then also, of course, the town manager, I mean, you know, part of the function of the town manager is to assist, you know, boards in certain areas. I'm not going to say that the town manager is jumping up and down, because this may be a political, um, um, issue, but.
Okay. So we'll have maybe two dates proposed, and we can find one that works for AgCom and post a meeting.
I'm going to throw a lot more than two at you.
I think less options is better.
Okay, so I think what we can do as next step is we can, I can reach out to Mr. Allison, I can reach out to you, we can figure out dates that we know work for the two of you guys, and then hopefully you guys can communicate that with your membership to get us to a better point.
Great, yeah, I'm pretty available.
We want a farmer's market, so we know it's probably getting less likely by the day here, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and speaking to us.
Do you have any other public comments from the public?
No one on Zoom.
All right, any other public comments from the board?
Just, everybody come out to the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser Friday night, seven o'clock, and I assume, Mr. Chair, you have a team ready?
We do.
All right. And the gauntlet was thrown down by the, a little, a little bit of hype talk from the police department on the, as the defending champ, so come out and see the sparks fly.
It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun, I highly recommend it. All right, any other public comments from the, from the board? All right. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Time is nine forty-three, the select board is adjourned, and again, we will be meeting next week, and look forward to seeing you then.